Bring it to progress.
Let's get started. We're the budget leaders. Budget leaders of the United States of America and to a republic for which is hands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome.
Councilmember Bob.
Here.
Councilmember Emerald Baker here. Councilmember Happy.
Here.
Councilmember Keller.
Here.
Councilmember Seager.
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt.
Here.
And Mayor Wood.
She's excused. It's out of town. On vacation. Get that. Uh additions or amendments to the agenda?
Uh I would like to add one item. Uh we have a good update from our lobbyist Trey. Uh I'd like to put in there before the executive session, so it'd be the new item number five. Bump everything else down one spot.
We need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yeah. The second?
Second?
I got motion of this Pruitt and second my Emily Baker. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any discussion on that? Alright, alright. Any opposed? Alright. What if it has this? And adoption of the consent agenda?
Well, we need to do the, we can do the public hearing now.
Oh, public hearing, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, just gonna keep going here.
No.
Alright. And uh we need to say anything in the saying that we're moving into the public hearing script?
Uh you just need to officially open it at whatever time it is, and then we'll move into the process.
Got it, so six oh two, we're going to open the public hearing on the FEMA floodplain regulations.
Yep, and we'll start with the staff report, and we have our planners Dan Mead and Jamie.
Crawford.
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 Yes, from AKS or what it is AKS?
You will be soon.
Okay, it's been a long day. Uh they took the lead on handling all of this, this is definitely a, out of my, my, my specialty, so. They spent a lot of time going over this, they presented to the planning commission last week, week before. Yep, and now it's in front of you guys before we can send it for official adoption next month, so.
Um I'll be as brief as possible, I'm Dan Meader. And it's been a long time, uh uh with, with a few weeks, a few, a little while back, but. I started my, my career in this room fifty years ago in nineteen seventy-five. And I played the Smith with the city manager and uh. We had some really interesting meetings here over the, for the next fifteen years or so. Um and tennis and engineering will be no more as of July one. It'll strictly be AKS engineering and forestry. And Dan Meader will be retired after fifty-five years with innocent, that's enough. And uh I'm leaving, I'm leaving you in good hands with Jamie. She's done most of the work on the floodplain issue on this for you guys, and I'm gonna turn it over to her. Um this is a legislative hearing, we don't have to qualify the decision makers or anything, you're making the law. So if you're acting just like legislative boards. Jamie?
Great, thanks Dan. So what we have, well, let me back up. Essentially, the federal government and the state of Oregon are requiring jurisdictions um to choose one of three options. Uh if they are wanting to stay within the national floodplain insurance program. Um the first option is just to prevent any sort of development within the floodplain. Which is easy for other jurisdictions that, you know, already have those regulations in place. Not easy for you guys, because you're already, I mean, you're right next to the Columbia River. You have um you a substantial amount of floodplain in your, in your city. Um the next option is to adopt what they were calling the biological option. So all of these changes kind of, they came out of a lawsuit that Portland Audubon Society sued federal government and FEMA. Um because uh they said that the, the floodplain protections weren't actually protecting um habitat. Or endangered species, and so, and this was all the way back in two thousand and nine. So all of these are kind of coming from that, that decision. Um so the, the biological option is, it's a requirement. To have um an environmental scientist or like biologists or wetland scientists prepare habitat assessments for every single permit they use. Um and Dan has uh attended some of the FEMA floodplain, you know, meetings or trainings related for uh. The, these new requirements and. How much, who was it that told you, it was a really crazy number?
Oh, um uh we also worked for the city of Culver, and in the process of building a skateboard. A facility in their main park. And uh turns out, there isn't a body of water anywhere near Culver. But they do have a floodplain because they live in kind of a bowl. And when there's a thunderstorm, there's a sheeting action and the water runs down into, into Old Town. And a small portion of it, if this was the park. Uh a small portion of it runs over a street curb while like that, so the, the, the state, the state skateboard is in the. In the floodplain. And the, the city engineer looked at the pick them or bio, biological option permit. And came to me and says, if we have to do this, it's gonna be a twenty thousand dollar bill. And I said, well, they haven't adopted it yet, you can use the old development permit. He said, get it done the next morning. If that is that much difference, I mean, if, I think that if this uh. Uh wildlife habitat protection stays in effect, there'll be few floodplain permits issued, only people with lots of money.
Yeah, so thank you so much. Um so with that sort of like cost context, we have suggested that jurisdictions adopt, which is the third option. The third option is adopting the Oregon model um floodplain model ordinance. Um word for word essentially, because the model ordinance has been um vetted by the state's lawyers. Federal lawyers, FEMA personnel, it's been updated um to make sure that it meets all state statutes requirements. Um they even did an assessment related to the statewide planning goals. And so um. Bottom of the FEMA reps, they, they want it word for word um within your city ordinances. So what we've done and what's in front of you um are a series of amendments to three different chapters. Um the first, they have their own sort of definitions related specifically in model ordinance related to the floodplains. Um and so I, instead of sticking them somewhere else in your code, I'm suggesting that we um have a section. That's just floodplain definitions in um your article two for you guys. Uh and that would kind of keep things in the contained if and when. The state and the federal government choose to update things, because. There's already lawsuits and stuff related to all this. Um so keeping it sort of clustered together um is easier if we have to do future amendments. Um the other section that's being amended is your flooding overlay itself. Um and essentially, we're just breaking the entire chapter and just moving replacing with the, the model ordinance. And that, the bulk of that language. And then um. The chapter related to administrative provisions, I think that's the name of it. Um sorry for my memory. But I put language uh defining the city administrator, so Jordan, as the, the floodplain. Floodplain permit official. Because floodplain permitting, even though it's a permit. Under Oregon law, it's not considered a land whose permit under ORS one ninety-seven. Um because this permitting is supposed to be uh. Not, not subjective, like it's supposed to be very checkbox, it's engineering, it's engineers talking with engineers about. Um you know, their calculations for if you are um able to meet or uh if your proposed development. Is creates a known net loss um within the flood storage capacity of the floodplain. And so um essentially, Jordan will be signing off on things, but it will really be Ed. Um your guys' city engineer that's talking with um whatever applicant engineer. Oh man. Um and then uh. What else? Oh, so that language is kind of put in there defining the city administrator as a bloodplane official. And then just clarifying that this isn't a land whose. Um I need to figure if you guys have any questions about things, so I'll open it up.
Um I do have a couple of questions, I'm, I, geez, so you don't have a copy of the document, do you? Just because I think there's a couple of spelling errors right, right? Thank you. So on page um six of the document. Under. Uh historic structure section, the letter I guess, the letter of map change. And. Under the conditional letter of map amendments, the coma. I know, it's like. I know, there's no page numbers, I wish people.
Yeah, that's not bad. I can amend this so that there are page numbers for you guys.
So it's under a conditional letter of map amendment, under, it's up, it would be page six, one, two, three, four, five.
Six of eighteen, when it says six of eighteen.
No, that one, so before.
No.
We thought before that.
Oh, no ma, yeah, okay, got it.
Um the, uh comma, yeah, the um I, for the, in the parentheses there, it says one percent. Can you all change, is that supposed to be annual chance?
I see it.
Cause when I looked it up, annual chance came up, uh I just, okay. And then on the next page. Um under PMR. Under PMR, but in the last sentence there, that's supposed to be base, effective base. Elevations. Would be on the seventh page.
Paragraph G.
Yeah, paragraph G.
Last sentence.
Oh, see it, yeah. The material used as a weapon of mass destruction are reliable, but we. No, PMR, three, it's a word, uh G, PMR is the title of the paragraph, the last sentence. The effective, uh it said base, but I think flood evaluation, flood calibrations, I think it would be.
It's the next page from the coma.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's paragraph G. The coma, paragraph A.
So what was the word? Oh, so. Which is in a different corner, that's why.
Right. Oh, I'm going this way, that's happens. There we go.
Okay, here, so that, that one right there.
Yep, got it.
And then I just had a question on my setbacks, um sure. Is that the standard, the twenty, the twenty foot, cause I thought, or I, I thought from River County, it was, it was changing, did that, do we know if that changed certain? The setbacks changed?
Not that I'm aware of.
Cause all throughout this document, it's like twenty feet or uh like, we would have to know. Although I would say man, uh setback, then the, yeah, uh, he was fourteen of the next, so we have like. I don't know if baseball read.
Yeah. Hallelujah.
Yeah, hallelujah, I guess this is, so.
Makes it so much easier, literally be on the same page.
Thank you. He's fourteen of eighteen, under um at, at for tenants excessive structures section uh three, uh three. It talks about uh. That, that the structure will be located at a minimum of twenty feet from all property lines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that, is that just standard Oregon, the standard, standard Oregon, because I know in, I, I, I thought it was my understanding of River County that we had like a ten point. Was set back on the sides and a fifteen from the back.
Right, and so um they, whoever is getting a floodplain permit is still going to have to meet city um standards for zoning, and so it. This um it's the more stringent rule applies.
So this point.
So this was, would apply to that.
Okay.
So if yours is saying fifteen or your rear setback or whatever.
The city setbacks would control where you're at, I believe.
Over the permit, over the floodplain?
Well, the city setbacks are like five, then forty feet, I mean, they're all twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kathy, do you know, uh, do you know, I mean, cause I thought.
I know what normal, regular setbacks are, but floodplain setbacks are different.
Okay, does it, does that change that, cause I, I also noticed that later on in our other, our other. Which like, okay. Um Jordan, how much property do you have in, in the floodplain?
It's not a huge amount, I know. I, I mean, it's less than twenty tax lots, I mean, there's a few across the river, but. I would say actually undeveloped land, it's very minimal.
And people do own those, people, if people do own those, is it, they're not city owned or?
Correct, yeah.
Anything like that.
Oh, okay.
So um and then my question, my only other question would be to also to um to Jordan is, is this something you think that you're gonna be able to administer? I mean, this is pretty complicated.
Well, I, I wrangle them into helping me. I mean, yeah, this would not be me by myself, but they, there would be a checklist I'd follow, and I get stuck, I'd, I'd call them. Yeah. And, and I don't see us doing a whole lot of these, if, if we get one every five years, that'd be a lot.
Yeah.
I've been in fifty years. Maybe five. In all that time for twelve cities.
Yeah, I.
Any other questions?
I was gonna ask one, I guess for my own edification and for councils. Walk us through that process if somebody wants to develop on a floodplain. From, from their conception of an idea to them actually building the darn thing, what does that look like?
Yeah.
Okay, cause I've just been through one of these.
Perfect.
The uh, the applicant. Prepares a, a permit. Uh but comes in for a uh. Little preliminary, pre-application conference and processes is literally explained. You prepare a drawing, or you have your engineer prepare a drawing showing what it's gonna look like. Then your engineer takes this floodplain development permit, the simple one, and completes it to the best of his ability. And you hand it to our engineer over here, and you guys. Talk about it, and if you're both satisfied with it, you present it to the floodplain administrator and planners. And if everything's in, in, there's no public hearing. It can be, but there isn't, doesn't, doesn't need to be. And if the engineers agree and the drawings meet both the floodplain requirements and the city standards, the floodplain administrator signs it. That's simple.
And essentially, I mean, the engineer, it's, it's a program that they run, where it's like, you know, based calculations based on flow um. The, the width and the um, the specific condition of the floodplain that you're like proposing to develop in or touch at all. Um but then even with, so uh. If somebody, if your property is just clipped, like his skateboard, um skateboard park. Um then you still have to get a floodplain permit because it's on the same property. But if you're showing that you're not affecting the floodplain at all, and you're not, and you're staying outside of it. You don't need to get an engineer to have us, to tell us that.
That, that's the main goal of this, is to show no net negative effects on the floodplain, right?
No net loss.
Loss, okay.
For storage capacity, but yeah, if you're, here's my map, you know, I'm showing that I'm setback away from things, then. Our engineer can just confirm that. Um. Speaking of setbacks, so I'm going to reach out to the FEMA rep for clarity on this and which controls. And if we can adjust that.
I would assume that this probably would control it, but.
Even or not, we found yours.
Well, she just said two. Vetted by the state and the Feds. Um. Oh, so for adoption, I haven't talked about timelines, um. Oregon and the feds are requiring jurisdictions to have um either pick one of those three options and then have it be in effect as of July twenty-second. That's the date that they decided. Um and so. The city can choose to adopt um the amendments today. And then have this go into effect thirty days from now. Or um you can choose to um adopt at your next council hearing. But there will need to be an emergency clause in that ordinance, just to make sure that things are into effect by July twenty-second.
Where should it be, when is the next council meeting?
July fourteenth.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so we're good there.
Yeah, so you're gonna have two readings every day, you don't need an emergency clause, right?
We still need the emergency clause to get, to go around the thirty day notice, yeah. Then we have our own internal policy, it will pass as long as there's no, all it's voted seven zero, so. Which I'm not sure who would argue against updating our floodplain, but you know.
Yeah, so um. In my current understanding that. The, the intention of this ordinance and the floodplain regulations is to protect the ecosystem that, you know, surrounds the river. It, does, let's say I'm a property owner who wants to, i- am I able to build into the uh floodplain? Just a little, if I'm taking, cause to me, there should be, there's really two considerations, one is the nature, but there's also. That the property owner, they don't want to build and then their, their property's flooded, you know, and they have a mess on their hands. So uh I'd like to think that if they were so courageous to say, well. I, I want to build the floodplain, the city would go, that's fine, you gotta build up, or you know, you have to be smart in your, your architecture. So it doesn't damage your infrastructure and your footing and all that stuff. So how, is that even an option, or is that?
That's, that's what your, that's what your engineer's gonna do for you.
They can work through that.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, they just need to, I mean, there's different building practices that are going to affect them, so. And one of the most common ones is not having any livable space on the ground floor. So like a garage can flood, and then up top is where you have, you know, your actual bedrooms and kitchens and those sort of things. But um those are under like the, the building code that would click into effect.
Right.
Um to allow them to be a part of this national flood insurance program too.
Okay.
Um but yeah, no. Developing the floodplain is okay, as long as you're able to show there's no net loss source capacity. Which is the whole reason why we're updating, so, yeah. Um. But you did hit on a point that. The city of Cassie lost Lucky, and I think you guys have done a great job at having whole five protections around your rivers and wetlands. And so those protections also are still going to apply and be slapped on this too. So somebody can't, um if it's uh, if somebody is proposing to do work in the floodplain, that's also considered. But um that wetland and all that inventory, they'll have to go through planning to then uh meet all those requirements as well. So those don't just go out the window. Those are on top.
Any other questions?
Um when is FEMA gonna officially adopt the new floodplain map?
July twenty-second.
July twenty-second, okay.
Yeah, so that's when they pick in.
Okay.
And I know it's changing, there's a couple properties that are really being affected by that mapping.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a lot, but there's a couple. Mainly along the two creeks, Dry Creek and.
Moody.
Moody, yeah.
Well, I have a question for you, you, as far as communication with those property owners, have they already been notified?
Oh yes, we sent mailers directly to them, they invited them to the open house, I mean, they've, they've all been notified.
So anybody that's got any impact by this.
Correct.
Have been notified, and has there been any concern that we've heard from any residents?
Um I think the one affected the most is sitting next to me, and I haven't heard anything, so.
What can I do? Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I, other than, I haven't heard any, anything from any property owners, so.
Do you know, can you estimate, I mean, I know it depends on each property, but how much expense this adds to a building process?
Um it's pretty minimal, I would say um. It, it's essentially, it functions sort of similar to the city approval of a building permit. And so probably an hour of like staff times, uh Jordan's time, maybe an hour of engineers, cause it's pretty quick. You know, either you meet it or you don't. Um and I think I've. Kathy, what is the cost for your building permit?
Let me, well, we, we have a one hundred dollar building permit review fee.
Right, and so that would basically kind of cover this permitting.
Yeah, so cities' costs to them would be less than five hundred?
Yes.
The amount of cost that their engineer, my extra work they have to do, I, hard to say, but.
True.
But that's a lot of the time, um when people see those costs, um then they're just like, well, I'm just gonna pull my house back. So that I don't have to hire an engineer, right?
That's usually the uh, the end result.
Yeah.
Do you have a, a reimbursement fee?
Yeah.
In your, in your uh applications for conditional uses and, and so forth?
So what they have is they have um, the, you guys have a good deposit that, that gets refunded.
Okay.
Based on.
Well, um in, in, in this case, you've got to think about the cost of the city engineer as well.
Yeah.
So. That should be picked up by the applicant.
Yeah, yeah, but if, if it's now or my time, hour of his time, we're looking at probably four hundred bucks, give or take.
That's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good questions, everybody. Your job, you mentioned the typos.
Yeah.
Alright.
Um I did send in, in response to Bernard's email, a good interactive map on that website from the county. Um I have hard copies of, of the map, if you guys will look at them, the new one in the office, I can get you copies. Um but I said that the, the new map goes into effect next month, so.
And actually, the new mapping is really adequate. Um because I mean, the previous maps were done in like the.
Eighty-fourth.
Yeah, and so this one is actually based on LiDAR and some type of bank mapping and stuff, so it's more true rather than like.
Not what Grandpa Bill saw twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I'm prepared, yeah.
Do we have any uh public testimony or?
Written testimony. I did not receive any, we do have one audience member, do you have any public testimony?
Well, then we can uh close the hearing. Thank you very much.
So now council wants to deliberate on any of this. This is their time to do it, unless you were all good. Uh like I said, the, the ordinance will officially come in front of council on the fourteenth, so.
Okay.
With an emergency clause.
With the emergency clause, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have approving it on the agenda tonight, we wanted to have this conversation first.
So we'll uh close the public hearing at six twenty-eight AM.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
It's nice to get some questions, mostly if we say, we gotta do this and we don't like it.
Well, it is, it is, that is frustrating part about all, I mean, we can fight the state of Oregon.
Yeah.
As Kathy said, what else you gonna?
Yeah, exactly, oh, this, exactly. Thank you. Do I pause this?
Um so I mean, we're technically in session, this wasn't a work session, it's part of the regular meeting.
Okay.
Uh we don't have, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, I thought this discussion would take closer to an hour. Um we have our next public hearing set for seven oh five, and we can't start any earlier than that. I don't know if more public will show up at seven, because that's our regular scheduled time.
Just took out our executive session and we have uh.
Correct.
Item. Item five, but I don't think Trey's online yet.
Yeah, Trey or the uh folks from CIS are not online yet. Um so we can go for the, the adoption of the consent agenda, we can do the action items, we can do the reports. Or we can do a recess till seven and come back and reconvene at seven at our normal start time.
Is anybody opposed to us doing things a little out of order to kind of keep things rolling?
Why don't we take the second session?
Cause they're not here, I, I told them seven o'clock, I like said, I thought this would be.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I thought this discussion would be closer to an hour.
We're, we're gonna, we are legally allowed to do the things.
So it's uh.
Yes, because we had, is the meeting starting at six?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, the meeting started this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So item four, adoption of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to adopt, adopt the consent agenda with the. A removal of the ratification of the bills for the stuff these things.
Let's see, we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Holding out the ratification of bills. Uh, it's gonna move by, Arianna, and second, I got Tiffany. All those in favor? Okay, oh, discussion, sorry, skipping the discussion, I apologize, discussion. Tiffany, you got your hand.
Just on a minute, um, I thought we discussed that we were going to just uh give a little read. What a citizen came and spoke about. Are are we not gonna do that anymore?
Not what they spoke about, but that they spoke before council.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I recall and that's what I've been doing.
You're right, you're right. I apologize. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Right. Roll call or uh, I guess all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
So then go, so now it's down to.
Uh, we can move it down to would be now nine B.
Nine B.
So action item nine B.
And we're holding off on the executive session. Appearance of interested citizens to share a variety of perspectives on issues facing our community and see. For you, uh, wanna speak?
Um, yeah, it's six o'clock start time. No, but thank you.
Okay. So we don't have anybody uh there. We're holding off on the public hearing, so moving on to item nine A.
Eight, 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 eight?
No, but we, cause we moved Trey, we inserted Trey in as item five, so everything got bumped down one.
Oh, okay. Alright.
It's okay.
Like confuse everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it is.
Keep us all on our toes here. Uh, so nine A, adopt resolution number fifteen twenty-two, updating our sewer rates.
Alright, on uh July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, council approved hiring Trilogy LLC to perform a water and wastewater rate study and cost service analysis. Over the fall and winter, Trilogy performed their analysis. The process was slowed due to Jacobs backing out of their contract to operate the city's treatment plant. Once the city determined the amount to hire a new contractor to operate the plant, the rate structure was reassessed and presented on June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Council provided direction to staff to build a resolution for review and approval to update wastewater rates below as a breakdown of the rate changes. Um, resolution fifteen twenty-two uh has a proposal date uh or proposed effective date of September twenty-first each year for the new rates to go into effect. Um. The city attorney has reviewed the um. Resolution, there was one typo, he found section one A. It states resident, residential sewer charges shall remain. As follows, the remain should be uh in effect as follows. Um, it does state that for residential sewer flat rate, the current rate is forty-five fifty. Effective not September twenty-first, twenty twenty-five will go up ten percents, ten percent to fifty dollars. Uh, in twenty twenty-six, another nine percent to fifty-four fifty, and in twenty-seven, another nine percent to fifty-nine forty-one. The residential sewer charge per one thousand gallons will see increases of six, nine, and nine percent. Uh, starting at eight seventy-seven currently and at eleven oh five in twenty twenty-seven. The commercial sewer flat rate up to five thousand gallons will see the same increase of ten, nine, and nine percent. Um, with the same base rates. The commercial sewer rate per gallon will also see the same increases of six, nine, and nine percent. The water system improvement debt fee. Um, or wastewater system improvement debt fee uh will see a thirteen percent um increase for the majority of households. Uh, at that five eighth, five eighth inch, which brings the current rate from fifteen-ten to seventeen dollars. Um, and then it will actually see a decrease at our largest um pipes of four inches from four sixty-one down eight percent to four twenty-five.
So we had discussion, I mean, yeah, a motion to, if there's a simple, please, one. You updating sewer rates with the correction in section one A of. I'll second that.
Discussion, Tiffany.
So I have a question, uh, what, uh. So if this, if this gets passed, this won't come before us again?
Correct, this will be in effect, yeah, it'll it'll be passed, it'll be law, it'll first show, in effect September twenty-first.
And there'll be automatic increases in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes, unless council steps in to change it.
Okay, and um I don't remember having a discussion, maybe I, maybe I just wasn't paying attention that the debt service fee would go up like that.
Yes, we had that discussion. It wasn't a very long discussion, but it was presented. Uh, at the last meeting and I I think before as well. But it has been discussed. But again, we we, as as they said, we can come back in a year, reassess these numbers and we can change them again. This doesn't mean they're set in stone for three years.
So will that be, I I mean, will, will that be on the ticket? I mean, that'll be in the ticket or be on the.
Yeah, we we can, yeah, council wants to do a reassessment every year. We we definitely can.
Yeah, so I don't remember uh discussing either. Changing the W S I P debt fee as well. But regardless, uh, I sent a question to the city administrator. I apologize, it was later than I wanted to. But it was a huge basket, but anyways.
Yeah.
Don't want any excuses and I want, we'll talk more about that then, yeah, but. So the question I sent was, when the council adopted the W W S I P debt fee? In what year, what year was that?
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I think.
It's been twenty twenty. So when they adopted that.
Or might have been later, but somewhere in that range, yeah.
Not set it at the proper rate at that time to meet the debt obligations? That surprised me that.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah, it surprised me as well.
So, okay, so just to be clear, they said at fifteen-ten. Have we been making our proper debt payments?
We have, yeah.
Based on fifteen-ten revenue? So why do we need to raise?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good question. I I can't say I agree with the need to raise it.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I I would have to follow up with them on more details as how they got to this this math, so.
Alright, so yeah, so uh. You guys have heard me take my bitch on the water. I don't wanna overpay for debt. Uh, I I don't wanna underpay either. I wanna pay what the debt requires, you know, and uh. It feels like here we would be overpaying. And again, I take issue with that, just like I take some issue with water. Um, so. So I guess the question that, you know, I asked the why, but generally, the reason sewer utility would do that. Is with to to move revenue to fixed capital needs, you know? So maybe that was it, but uh again, if that got discussed, I totally missed it. This is new to me. Okay, that was my first question. And the second one is, why does it have a reduction in the four inch and three inch line?
I have another question.
I. I honestly couldn't tell you. That way, that that discussion never came up.
Alright, well, I I don't support reducing those lines unless there's a really good reason for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of the questions I asked, uh, in addition to this case was. You know, when the, when the utility, when the post was conducted. Does the uh, did the the uh, the consultant consider uh ability to pay? As they're, they're, they're dizzying out our rate structure. Uh, it's not uncommon that, you know, businesses with generally deeper pockets than your, you know, your little residential apartment dweller. Uh, might be charged a little more for these services because again, their ability to pay. Is greater than your, you know, your average residential customer. Um, and. You know, when it comes to a four inch line. Again, the fact we're going in the other direction, I really take exception with. In my mind, they should be paying more. And again, we should offset that by reducing it for our residential customers, just as kind of a a general concept. Okay, so that was, now I had, I wanted, let me just make sure I should wait my other questions. Okay, oh. And maybe you answered this one, uh, Mr. Bennett, but. Uh, I don't. But I really feel like we need to look up the council action in which this fee was adopted. And then, you know, my question was, was it their intention to like raise it later of? You know. If that's the case, then I'm much more open to this conversation. But if that wasn't done, then again, I fall back to, let's not charge more than we need to.
Aren't you talking to debt fee?
Yes, exactly. Uh, which is now fifteen-ten, exactly. Um, oh, and then two other things. So, right now, we say vacant buildings pay kind of like a, a reduced base charge. And um, I don't like that. See, I would like vacant buildings to pay the full base charge. And you can make an argument from a capital perspective, the fact that. They are connected to the sewer utility but not using it. That burden of operating and 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 making sure that we have a functioning sewer utility is still placed on the utility. So why are they not paying for those base, those those base charges? I think they should, and for the record, I just. I I'm sure you're, I I hope uh the city administrator and staff are taking advantage of of A I, but it's pretty brilliant. How you can quickly just, I said, does the city of Seattle, you know, I queried it and say. Do they charge a base rate for vacant buildings? They. It will, it will crawl the city of Seattle's website and spit out exactly from their code what it says. Yes, they do. The river does, Stevenson does. I only found one city that does not. So I feel like I'd like council to consider changing. Uh, our vacant building to have a a a, to be required to put a base rate. And the other one is 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 demolished buildings. Right now, there's no requirement on that. And I can't help but guy go wonder, you know. Again, you know, what are we doing to encourage people to to develop our town, you know? And should like commercially zone buildings that are demolished or vacant? You know, maybe, you know, they should, they should be on the hook for these these fees in my mind. At minimum, just to be a monthly nag, it's like, you're you're paying a fee, but you don't have a building there. Sell it, develop it, do something with it, just don't, why are you leaving this this? What we consider a valued commercial property empty. And, you know, uh, and and just, you know, burdening our town, you know? So I feel like I'd like to discuss those two as well. That's all I have, thanks.
Any other items?
I I will note that. The the items we're talking about, section seven, none of that changed. That was already in the. The language, but none of that moved, so, yeah, just want, just wanna clarify that, yeah.
This would be a do change.
Yeah.
So if, uh, so if you're gonna look into the debt service, is this really uh something? We should vote on, or should we wait to find that answer out?
When two, as I see it, we can, we can either pull the, pull the motion and or or we can vote and it just doesn't pass and we can give, you know.
We can also amend it to just take out the debt fee change and leave the rest of it.
Okay, so I'd like to amend my motion to. Pull out the, the debt service portion of it and have that come back at a later time.
Yeah, I I will do some more research on that one.
Thank you, and I'll second that.
So we're gonna vote on approving the motion with the removal of the debt fee increase.
Right, but so, and also the corrections, so in the.
And the corrections.
Yes, yeah, but yeah, the verbiage correction, correct.
Any other discussion on the amended motion?
Um, it could. For Bernard's suggestion, for friendly amendment, another friendly amendment, I don't mind, especially given the data that other cities are charging. Full rate for unoccupied buildings, that we would do that. I'm not so sure about the undeveloped land. Uh, but the unoccupied buildings makes sense to me that they should be. Paying the flat rate, cause we don't know if they're coming in the incident. And. And they still have. You know, say there's sewer water here. Um, if they're gonna do something with it, but that's just because Bernard brought it up.
Any other feedback on that?
To me, that's, that's a future, that's something we can discuss in the future. Um, you can, would you have, I'm sure you're researching.
Yeah, I can add it to the research if we come back for the debt service change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mary Ann, putting your hand up? Are you happy? Seeing no further discussion? Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes.
Excellent. So, Matt and Ferguson.
Right, yeah, but we can't start till seven oh five. That's the published uh public hearing start time. Yep.
So we'll go on to nine B, which would be the ratification of the bills in the amount of five hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and fifty cents.
Where is that? How they're gonna miss pay the Sundays and Sundays and that's already. Oh, it's like a mess.
Take it back.
It'd be enough.
Motion.
Do we need a motion? Really, it's stuck again, I think, because there's, I I really don't want it to pass.
I'll make a motion. Okay, so let me get to the end of the call. I move. For the, uh, I'm sorry, for the ratification of bills, the amount of five hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars.
And second.
Second discussion, listen.
Okay, I still have problems, I'm sorry. Uh, one, we don't have a description of what the bills are for. And two, there are still checks missing and they may be payroll and that's fine, but it should be noted in our bills that they're payroll or what it is. Because right at the beginning, we have uh check seventy-eight, uh, one, six, one, seven, eight through. Uh, eighty-one missing. Uh, we have later on, we have check one, six, two, five, zero through five, four missing. Later on, we have. One, six, three, two, six through thirty-one missing. And then also, we have check one, six, three, three, three. Uh. Attificated. One, six, one, six, two, three, three.
It's like it's got a V next to it and then.
And then if you begin, don't you avoid a check, use the.
Yeah. One more question for them.
Yes.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, so, uh, the cover sheet, this guy has those checks listed. Uh, that you were missing that were the payroll ones.
Oh, probably.
Yep.
Uh, well, that's. Um, I guess all of them, Warren, the one, six, one, three, oh, four is not listed to anyone.
That's not my question.
No, three oh four is on there.
It's on this one sheet.
Yes, but not that sheet.
Well, that's important.
That I can find.
Yeah.
But I also have a question in regards to the um payrolls. Think very if I'm wrong, uh, cause it's been a while, but when you do payroll and they are vouchers. You don't issue che, checks, you do them as the date of the payroll with the zero, one, zero, two, zero, three. If these are actual checks, who's signing the checks?
Well, payroll checks?
Or they aren't payroll checks, you're saying there's, they're.
No, the actual, the actual checks, it's usually me and the mayor, yeah.
Yeah, and whoever else signs, but it's Ben, the mayor.
Yeah.
Nine times out of ten, I think lately, and Jordan.
Okay.
Yeah.
I. Asked her, she said she's never signed, so that's why I'm asking this question. Okay.
Well, I guess I don't know. I guess I don't know that for a fact then because I have been doing payroll, but when I did payroll.
I know that's.
The mayor.
Yeah.
And Jordan was signing the checks and I'm assuming that's still what's happening.
Separate from A P, so.
Well, unless, not necessarily, because now A P is weekly. So, so, so payroll could be in there with those.
Yes, but typically they are, they are ran as a separate check run from A P.
Yes, I know they are just.
But they could be in the same stack of checks to be signed.
Right.
Alright.
Tiffany.
Okay, so twenty-six through. One, six, uh, one, six, three, two, six, three, one, that's not the. one, six, uh, one, six, three, two, six, three, one, that's not reflected in this.
Say that number again.
One.
Is my goal, which page you're on?
Oh, I'm going, I'm page three. Oh, this, page three. Uh, one, six, three, two, six through three, one is not, is not on this list, you know?
One, six.
Three, two, six?
Three, two, six.
Through three, three, one.
They're, they're not reflected. And then we've also got that duplicate and we have no descriptions. And also, um the handwritten total at the end, I mean, couldn't the the ledger have just started after the approved, after the bills that we've already approved and then have a having um, a total of like you know, I mean, we've got a handwritten total here taking out.
It makes it seem all questionable and it's.
Yeah, it makes it more questionable. I mean, we could have just started from the voided checks going down and not had all of this and had to have that subtracted from.
Want to respond to that?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll have to get back to finance department and look at the report ran. Yeah.
And I'd like to ask one little question. When you do AP and payroll, you usually print the check register out at that time and that is what is submitted uh for the um council packing. So why don't we have those types of reports? Because you print them right after you do the payroll and why do you do AP? And it's very simple. It's got your, got your descriptions, it's got everything in it and it has all your checks. And you don't do it from four, one to six, thirteen.
Almost there, five.
Any other discussions? Feedback?
Well, I guess I would like, if you don't mind, I would like to take a little stab at the, because I tried running them correctly. And because of the ones that were avoided, I couldn't, I couldn't get it to stop at the last approved because I went and looked, four fourteen was the last approved bills list. And because that group of checks that was voided, it it wouldn't come up on that check run because I think the dates, I think how the checks were entered were kind of like all different dates. Um. So I couldn't do it, so you know, basically, if you subtract those numbers, which is you would get that number, but it should have been shown on them.
But that's why we ended up with the handwritten number on there because of these uh.
Yeah, we couldn't get a report to to stop at the four fourteen run that you approved to everything following that. And I think it had something to do with that huge batch of voided checks. Because if you run a whole report from, from the date before fourteen, all those checks would pop in. But they didn't pop in if you ran a check register from after the fourteen.
Why wasn't the check register ran from four fifteen on?
That I can't answer.
Because that would have taken out everything that we have.
And then, you know, and I'd be perfectly satisfied. I mean, I'd be okay with if you, if we if you started where it would, you know, from the four fifteen on and then just said that checks one, six, one, eight, two through uh just hand wrote uh one, six through one, six, two, zero, three were voided. I mean, that, that, that to me, that's, that's fine. And the handwriting of the, you know, picking up checks, picking out the first part is just, it just looks different.
Right.
Yeah, I I think our lesson started here, but this council, you know, can be person that gets it, right? We want to understand these numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And when we, you look at this, that last number that's handwritten, like, wait, how did he get to that, you know? You can maybe assume they took out.
Yeah.
But if you showed that math, I feel like a lot of these.
Yes, my, my, yeah, I kind of assumed the cross that section was backed out of that final number.
Yeah, but it's not, you know.
That, yeah, I assume.
Addict up by ourselves, just like, don't make it do that.
Yeah.
Just keep it simple. And the, and the other thing is, look, as much as I, I agree with this scrutiny that's being provided, I don't want to see handwritten voided check. I want the computer telling me it's a voided check.
Yeah.
But that's how I know it's in itself. And it's not the, you know.
It will show.
Okay, just.
Yeah, I don't.
And that's why, I mean, but it's not possible, then I'm satisfied.
I, I knew what you were saying. I get it, yeah, alright. Denise?
Thank you. And I think y'all can see the the cover sheet, which is saying here, wait, here's some things that are missing, it has that same counter that was handwritten here. Don't try to, these words, you know, included in this report and here it is. So it was calculated there.
I know, but when you, when you start handwriting and we're gonna pay, then you need to connect that, right? It's not, it wasn't connected.
And what I think, when I hear you say that too, is also for historical reasons that leaders do go to pull them, you know? And we're looking at it through our packet and we're like, what does that mean? Without hearing this discussion, you don't have the math on the paper, it's hard to understand, so just show your math, right?
When we're taking the word.
Oh. Any other discussions?
Yeah, and I would, and I would like just to have the description of what the checks was for back in the thing, um, so, I, you know, I don't know, if you guys don't, go ahead and pass this. Probably because of those, but I I would like to see the corrections made before we if we approve it.
I don't have any issue with that.
Yeah, if you wanted to pull your motion in and.
Oh, okay, uh. Uh.
You can rescind your motion.
You're sending, I rescind my motion to approve the bills for five hundred eighty one thousand eight hundred sixty eight dollars.
We'll just table that till next council meeting.
It's the second.
I second, right? Do I have to rescind?
I'm gonna just second the motion.
I second his research.
Sounds good to me. Alright, I think we're all in agreement. We're gonna table this for now. Um. And it's seven o'clock. Do we want to take a quick little, uh, few minutes and?
Um, John and Ramon from SEAS are on Zoom, um, so we can now move into the executive session, if council wishes.
Let's do that.
Alright, so we need to vote to, or no, we recess regular session, move into executive session.
Do we know back the long, it's gonna be?
I don't know. I know.
We need a motion to do that?
Yes, we do need a vote.
I'm drawing a blank. I know we've done it.
I don't think you have to.
No, I, I'm trying to think back the last time.
Regular and interim to executive, but.
Yeah.
Trade this guy here, do we want to give things in order and go to item five, which would be our uh report from?
Uh, up to you all, yeah.
That's not tradeable, bro.
Yeah, let's do that. Good timing.
Okay, thank you very much, councilors. Appreciate it. Um.
So where are we at?
Item five.
The new item five.
Oh.
Well, I am pleased to report some, some news, people, legislation today. Uh, amendments were dropped on in a number of the, most all of the capital construction bills, uh budgetary items and included uh in House bill uh five, zero, zero, six is a section two hundred that reads in addition to and not in lieu of any other appropriation or appropriated to the Department of Transportation for the binding beginning July one, twenty twenty five of the general fund, uh, the amount of one million dollars for the city of Cascade Locks and McCord Creek Bridge Power Line Relocation Project.
Yeah. We regard.
Uh. It's such a news, um, you know, it's uh, it's not done yet. Uh, the hard part is definitely getting it in the bill. Um, and and so we've accomplished that. Uh, thanks to uh a lot of people, all of you, um, Jordan, thank you for your help and uh and chairman or council, council, council overseer, thank you for your help as well and the sort of the, the council outstanding work. Um, still some, some process to get through. Uh, it will um go before the um, the uh committee Capitol Construction Committee tomorrow morning at eight. Uh, I'll uh tune into that, um, that committee probably uh on the computer. Um. It will most likely receive a due pass recommendation, at which point we'll move on to the um, the broader Joint Ways and Means Commission, uh, of which it is part uh committee and then uh the Joint Ways and Means Committee will have a work session of its own, which we will schedule. Um. These work sessions are, uh, you know, testimony is taken, this is just a process for the committee itself to uh talk amongst themselves, the public, so we can all see it. Um. And then, uh, assuming that it gets a due pass recommendation from uh Joint Ways and Means, uh, it will uh go on to the House floor. Um, it gets a, a second reading uh at that point and then they have to wait a day and then gets a third reading and a vote on the House floor. Um, if it's not amended, then uh, which it shouldn't be, um, it will go on in the Senate, same process for the Senate, there are amendments at the Senate, then um, it will be signed by the Senate President, the Senate Speaker of the House, somebody goes to the governor. Um, the governor does have light item veto authority for these budget uh issues. I have no doubt that the governor would select something like this to, to light item veto, it's not controversial. Um, so there's a very I think promising, pretty good path for the um. For the bill?
That's great news.
Awesome.
That's great.
It's not very, it's not, uh, on the, hopefully on the, the House bill two, one, five.
No. Yeah.
Oh, God. That, that was a mess, right?
There's some messy stuff for sure, like the legislation, they have some challenges, they have to deal with.
Any other comments?
So can you remind us, I mean, we were competing against how many billions of dollars of?
Yeah.
Because when I went there to testify, that line of people, that equaled how much?
My, what I was told, there were two billion dollars in requests and the last I heard, they were gonna uh, they had about somewhere in the three to five hundred million dollar range. It was five hundred million before the, the sort of the bad budget use arrived. I don't know where they wound up. I'll go through and count it out. There'll be, someone will count it at some point and sell how much it was. Um, yeah, no, it was very competitive. Um, it was a very, very challenging process and uh required a lot of diligence on everybody's part who was involved in it. Um. Uh, you know, uh Senator Bottom at first was a strong advocate and um uh Rick Culprich, um, Seth even late, that's I think one of the reasons why it's a House bill. Uh, and then Representative Noss, the chair of the committee, um, uh, also, um you know, was, was important with the, in moving this through, as were the other committee amendments, you know, they're all um involved in process, House leadership, Senate leadership, so uh, a lot of people involved.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Maybe my day. Yeah.
Well, anything?
If anything pops up and you want more, I'll report back on the rest of the process. Um, uh, signed, uh, is on the thirtieth, so.
Process ends on the thirtieth.
Ends on the thirtieth, one way or the other.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, six more days.
Assuming nothing stalls and that we can push it over or a special session, some, some strange uh process, you know, we should, we should.
Well, thank you for all your hard work on this and making this track out here to give us this great news.
I appreciate you, so.
Yeah.
It's been a, been an exciting process.
Well done.
You know, done.
Who's got, I was gonna give a good recall.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trey.
Uh, if there are any questions afterwards, please feel free to reach out and um, off about updates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, that's good news, huh? I don't think I've ever had heard clapping at a council. Idea first, alright. Uh, so now we're moving into uh agenda item six, our executive session. You have to.
Yeah, we have to clear the room physically and virtually. Oh, yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, executive session for ORS one nine two dot six, six, zero, two, H, legal counsel regarding litigation or litigation to be filed.
Do I just pause?
Yes, pause the recording.
Uh, oh. It all got shuffled.
Yeah.
It's alright.
Um, okay, so did you open the public hearing?
I did not open. What do I need to say to open the?
Same thing as the other one. It's got in your packet.
Okay, packet.
Yeah. This is should be.
I don't see it in my.
Thanks.
Yeah.
There we go. Uh. Public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Cascade Locks Development Code is now open. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Uh, one, summary of staff report, two, public testimony or present written testimony, three, post the hearing and four, deliberation.
Alright, fine.
And we're on love.
Yeah, so I.
Staff report.
Yep, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Amanda Ferguson, who did ninety nine point nine percent of the work, uh, putting this together, uh, working with me in the steering committee, uh, and she is the expert on this, so I'm gonna turn it over to her.
I love that. Greetings, council. Thank you for having me tonight. Um, I, I'm sorry that it's virtually, but we are a little stuck here. We just started summer school again at the University of Oregon. So, as Jordan said, um, I am Amanda Ferguson. I think I've met most of you at one time or another over the last couple of years because I started working with Cascade Locks in twenty twenty two when we at the Institute for Policy Research and Engagement initially um helped develop the strategic plan for the city. One of the major goals of that strategic plan, of course, was the development of a downtown revitalization plan. And it was really focusing on improving the downtown, both visually and functionally, making the city's processes more business friendly and updating the city of Cottage Grove or Cascade Locks' development code to reflect the current community priorities. So that's what really the ordinances that are before you tonight are to, designed to do. Um, they came out of a process that began in twenty twenty four with a technical assistance grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And a steering committee made up of members of your community, particularly business owners and members of the planning commission, who came together to help us guide um a revitalization plan through the process. Major goals for the downtown revitalization plan include assessing current assets, evaluating existing barriers to economic goals and presenting actionable recommendations to improve the downtown, including code amendments, but also including parking, public parking, recreational tarot connections signage and other aspects of the downtown environment. The piece of that that we are working on today is the code amendments. The proposed amendments to the Cascade Locks Development Code that we're looking at include amendments to four of the five main articles of the Development Code. And there are ordinances attached to each so that eventually you can look, you could look at adopting Article One, Article Two as, and then not adopting Article Three if you want. So we did split them intentionally, um, but you can also, of course, um, adopt them all at once eventually. What we're recommending today is that we actually open the public hearing after I complete this um, brief overview. And then we would, we are recommending as staff with Jordan, um, he and I are recommending that you do not close the testimony at tonight, that you leave the record open for at least two weeks. Um, and then at, that would make it July seventh, leave a written record open up to that point so that we can get additional comments from both whom we hear tonight, as well as from the Oregon Department of Transportation, who we know wants to provide some comments on these ordinances and has some questions that we would like to address. And then we, the staff will take the time over the next two weeks after July seventh to revise the draft ordinances, revise the staff report and the findings that are attached to those ordinances and bring it back to you for deliberation at the end of July. So, um. I'm happy to go through the, the small changes that we're proposing to each of the articles, if you would like me to. Um, and I don't want to waste your time though, so if you feel like you already know what they all are, I'm gonna give you a chance right now to say that no, please don't do that, or let me know if you would like me to go through what the changes we're proposing are.
Yeah, I think we're seeing lots of nodding heads here, Amanda, please.
Okay, okay. Be happy to, yeah. So Article One, um, is the, obviously the first part of your code and really we're not making any at this point major changes to it. We're only recommending one small change to Article One. And that is to replace the existing illustration that's under building height um in the definition section. Because the existing illustration doesn't do a very good job at all of clarifying how you address building heights on a sloped property. So, um, you'll notice that we have attempted a new illustration that we hope is clearer and will help the. and will help the community better understand how the thirty-five foot maximum building height that's in the downtown zone in particular is read, although this building height, um, illustration will be useful for anywhere else in the community as well. So, very small change. When we get to Article Two, which is on procedures, we're making a few slightly larger, um, modifications. Specifically, currently, you have a pre-application process. Um, but the application, the pre-application process in your code is not defined, and it doesn't tell the applicant what they will get out of that pre-application meeting, nor does it actually require that the city do anything formally, um, to actually identify what they're going to present to that, at that meeting, and then what the applicant can use with that information. So we are recommending new standards for the pre-application meetings, and we are also crucially recommending that we delete the requirement for an architectural review committee prior to, to submission of a planning commission application. Right now, I'm sure you, you are very aware that you, there's actually a four-step process to, for a lot of these, um, site design reviews for new construction or major remodels within Cascade Locks. You have to actually, at this point, you contact staff, you may or may not do pre-application meeting, and then you'd have a architectural design review committee, which only meets whenever somebody requests a meeting for them, but it's still a public meeting, so it has to be advertised thirty days out. So typically, when you ask for an architectural review committee meeting, it happens hmm, six, eight weeks later. And then, they can meet once, or twice, or three times. And the comments that they give the applicant is supposed to put into their application, and then you make a planning commission application. So it can delay the process extensively. Um, so, the downtown revitalization project steering committee recommended that we simplify the process and remove the architectural review committee entirely. Instead, what we're doing is recommending changes to Article Three, which is the next section of the Development Code in, under the land use section, that will give clear and objective standards for the planning commission to, and the staff to use to review applications, so that we don't need a discretionary architectural review committee at all. So the other changes, the changes we're looking at for, um, under Article Three land uses, um, are probably the most broad brush, this is the section that will look significantly different than the current code. So if you're wanting to look over the next couple of weeks at which, at your code sections and really try to understand them, Article Three is the one that's gonna probably have the biggest changes. We are proposing a simplification entirely of the downtown zone and the corresponding parts of the commercial zone and the commercial residential zone that currently match the downtown zone, which is basically all of the design review and citing standards. And we are replacing the existing ones with a set of clear and objective designers review standards. We're also replacing the existing list of allow, of permitted and, and conditionally permitted uses with a more, um, consolidate, with a list that matches it in all the zones. Currently, the definitions and, um, terms used in downtown zone are different, but the same in the commercial zone, so it leads to a lot of ambiguity and confusion. So we're trying to make it across the board much more straight, straightforward. Retail is retail, rather than specifying, you can have a woodcarver, or an artist, or those types of things. Um, so we're trying to make it much more generic, um, in some ways, and much easier for people to define and be able to understand what is allowed and what isn't. We're trying to keep as well, um, those uses as broad as possible within the downtown zone, um, to the identified uses that the community addressed in, through our public process with the downtown revitalization study, which really includes a lot of mixed-use service and retail. That's also bolstered by mixed-use residential, both above and behind existing buildings and commercials, but as well as, um, multifamily residential. We are, um, also in the process adding mobile food units as a permitted use in the downtown zone, so that would be new entirely. And clarifying dimensional standards, parking requirements, and the other design standards that are associated with commercial and downtown development. The goal of this all is to create a mixed-use pedestrian-oriented corridor that preserves the pedestrian scale, um, while retaining the views of the mountains and the river, and referencing the arc, regional architectural designs to create a vibrant and cohesive streetscape. So, that's Article Three, and we can go into more detail on that if you choose. Um, but I would recommend, hold those kind of questions until after we hear from the public. So finally, one more section to go over real quickly before we open it up to the public. Um, Article Five is the last section we're actually recommending changes to, and that is the section on procedures. This is, the changes to this are really designed to make the code more business-friendly, make it easier for staff to process, make it easier for the planning commission to address the crucial issues that might be risen to them before the public. And then, so really go through administration and make this as clear and objective as possible. So we're removing references to the outdated downtown plan that was written in nineteen ninety-two. We are defining, um, within the provision section, two levels of planner view, one that would be just done by the city administrator, at basically a staff level application review, and then a second level that goes then to the planning commission, so that not every application included, has to come to the planning commission. If you read your code right now, technically, to repaint your building on an existing use has to come to the planning commission. It's not how it's typically been done, but that is what the code says. So we're trying to clear it, to change that, so that when you read the code, the code actually says, no, that would be a city administrator could make that decision, rather than that having to go to a public hearing. We are also looking at, um, clarifying submittal requirements, so that submission of plans matches the format that we're already currently taking plans in, um, rather than the old, old-school format that was written probably in the early nineties, so that it would have been all written and printed. We're, um, looking at approval standards again to remove the architectural review committee and simplify requirements for multifamily residential structures in particular. So removing a few of the very, and the kind of outdated, um, submission requirements that were directly associated with multifamily. And then, we are clarifying under maintenance, that buildings and structures have to be maintained in good serviceable quality. That is actually designed to bolster the other modifications that you have already adopted in the last couple of months to try to deal with, um, maintenance issues on derelict buildings. Um, and finally, I did wanna call out that we are recommending under all of the conditional use standards that remain in the code for, um, review by the planning commission, that noise is removed as an approval criteria, because Luba has determined that land, and noise can be not, does not have to be considered to be a land use issue per case law. And based on my experience, I would really recommend removing noise as one of your criteria, because it's incredibly discretionary and can lead to a lot of community battles over something that shouldn't be really dealt with through land use anyway. That is something instead that should be dealt with through your municipal code and your nuisance ordinance. So, um, oh, I should probably, one, one other thing I do wanna mention is we actually are recommending as well a three-tiered variance process, which would, similar to the design review process where we give some things just to staff to do. We're also recognizing that there are some things that get, you get, and get a variance for, that it would be better for staff just to do very small things like fence height. If you're asking for a five-foot fence rather than a four-foot fence, we don't feel as well that that needs to come to planning commission. So, again, we're trying to make this easier on both staff, the citizen volunteers that work in our committees, as well as the applicants that are coming forward to do development. Are there any questions at this point?
Renee?
Yeah, hi, I, Amanda, uh, Councilmember Seager. Thanks for the report and all the work you've done, and I really love what I'm seeing here. I'll confess, I didn't read all, whatever, a hundred and seventy pages of this thing in our packet. Uh, it's quite dense, and I went to the council president, you know, uh, this morning going, boy, I hope we're not voting on this night, because I'm not ready to approve this massive coded, uh, uh, update. And I'd like to, my, my request to the councils, and we've been this up in maybe two or three bite-sized or batches, that I can thoroughly go over each section and make sure I'm comfortable with what we're doing. But regarding questions, so just two things. Uh, one, in, in the proposed zoning, what do you say this building will be, will this building, property be zoned, uh, downtown, is that what's planned?
It is, yes.
Okay, 'cause I could see us maybe moving from this at some date in the future, you know, and letting it, you know, blossom into a spectacular property that some commercial developer takes over, you know, love to see it kids in life, you know. We go to a less, you know, favorable spot in town that's very functional and utilitarian, you know. Uh, okay, and the second question is, does this code talk about parking for downtown? And can you talk us a little, like, you know, that's become such a headache, uh, for towns, on how much parking do you make developers provide? And then, you know, drives it to cost a car, you know, and so, it, it's, it's a really, it's a sticky issue, you know, how do you guys propose we were dealing with that in our downtown?
Okay, well, so I wanna say that the, the code definitely does apply, um, and make some recommendations and make changes to parking standards in downtown. But it is only one part of a puzzle that the downtown revitalization plan sort of lays out in response to the parking concerns on Wanapa in particular. So with, because, how I say that is because the code changes are only one piece of this. Um, we, we're recommending that we do two major things, as one is that parking lots, new parking lots are going to be recommended to be behind or to the side of buildings, and also joint accessed with adjacent properties, to reduce the number of potential new accesses on to Wanapa. Since it's a state highway and we're trying to maintain state highway standards as well. And every time you put a new brake on the, on the road, you have, you make the pedestrian connections more complicated and the roadway more complicated. So we're trying to reduce the number of new accesses by doing joint access easements and putting the parking lots behind and, and wrapping them around buildings rather than having them directly accessed, or, and heaven forbid, definitely not back up onto Wanapa. The second major change, though, is we are actually recommending within the downtown district that we reduce the parking requirement for onsite parking for commercial uses. It's currently one per every five hundred gross feet of building. We're recommending one per every thousand of net. The difference between the gross and the net there is important, because that means that, um, a property, say, like a brewery, that has a large area that is warehouse, you wouldn't include the warehouse as part of the footprint, uh, that you need parking for. So you would only be looking at your parking for where there's public or staff, or the functional uses that actually include people. But you could take off elevator towers from your square footage requirement, um, you can take off staircases, you could take off storage sheds. So, um, it makes it, then the footprint that they're looking at is much more focused directly on who is actually causing the traffic. So that's one change within the net from gross to net, but we're also recommending having it. And that's intentional, because a lot of the properties that are vacant on Wanapa right now are too small to meet the current code standard for onsite parking and be ever developed. If you want development at all on those new properties, you have to reduce the onsite parking standard, or you're never gonna get any. I laid out a couple of the properties to try to figure out how to meet the current parking standard on a building, and literally, I couldn't get anything more than a coffee shack on most of the properties, like something under a thousand square feet. So, um, this is, this is an understanding that onsite parking is precious and needs to be in the right location and be there for people to use, but we, that, we actually don't need as much of it on every individual site, if we can come up with some other compromises within the community as a whole. And that's why I said the downtown revitalization plan is really looking at recommending that the city take an active step in actually developing public parking lots. Um, potentially initially on commercial lots that are already developed on properties that are vacant and getting leases with those property owners to allow them to be identified as public parking, so that we can develop more public on, um, parking, while, rather than relying upon property owners to develop it themselves.
Denise?
Thank you, Amanda, for all your work, I was part of the downtown revitalization committee, and this, and I, I just want this council to understand the, the folks and the time that went into the strategic plan that council, council approved, and that these codes are directly coming from that. So, just to clarify, were there twelve on the committee?
Mm-hmm. Well, and we also had a number of people who joined us after the committee was established, we just opened the doors and let anybody in, um, that went to infant from the community. I think at one point, we had a total of eighteen.
And several surveys, uh, for a long time out to the community and open houses, and so that you and the, I, um, the, the institute at University of Oregon took all of this data and then are outdated, are outdated old code and found many, um, things that needed to be changed anyway, they wanted to end compliance with what we were doing. And, and I really appreciate that now this plan, which I think was almost a year and a half, but I, dear, dear, the downtown strategic plan, turning it into code, and even having open houses about that, um, because that is a huge, huge, um, taking the idea, it's not just the idea of the plan that we spent a lot of time on, and a lot of people, I, I'm, I'm thinking John Flair was up there, I think, I forget, did any other counselors on the, but we had so much community, um, uh, representing various, uh, folks from the community, so a lot of, a lot of, um, input was, was gained, and, and you, your team looked at other cities, similar size, and shared things with us, and then heard back from the community that, no, okay, we'll do it this way. So I just wanted to let folks know, yes, it's a lot of reading now, and it comes directly from the strategic plan that did all of it. So, thank you.
Mark.
Thank you.
So, on the parking, just let me just use an example, so, is I, I serve where our downtown. To me, the most obvious, you know, setup is the Columbia Market parking lot, which is massive. And I live right above it, it's never full, you know, even on a busy weekend, it'll have like, I don't know, twenty spots filled, I don't know how many spots are down there. So would that be open to this, one of these joint uses that you're talking about? So a developer could go, okay, I don't have as much onsite parking as I quote need, but I can partner with this guy and get, uh, and, and meet my parking obligations that way?
Exactly. Because then we can, we can fill some of the actual vacant spaces and vacant parking lots and make it look more used on Main Street anyway, without having to pay eight, eight to ten thousand dollars per parking space to build new parking.
Yeah, okay, good.
And.
Denise?
If I may, a-also, um, because he has a lot of delivery trucks that take up a lot of space in there, but they, and there is a viable business there, there are, isn't, Amanda, you can explain the, the liability code or the liability release to cities that are using these for parking, let's say, on the old Chinese restaurant, or the co, uh, the, the Columbia Inn, is that what it's called?
Cascade Inn.
Yeah, Cascade Inn, if the city were to make a lease agreement, there is some liability benefit, release, isn't there? Like.
As a public agency, you're, um, yeah, the liability for a public parking lot is a lot lower than a private. So as, if they leased it and it became under the public, um, umbrella, there, um, they could, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be taking any liability from having people park in their parking lot at that point. The, the other thing, and maybe a benefit for, say, if you're going onto the, um, particularly the old hotel parking lot, it really needs restripped, maybe the city as part of their lease agreement agrees to restripe the parking lot, so there's actually a physical benefit as well. And if they do get a new use into that property, then they can modify that lease agreement or, or eliminate that lease agreement with the city once they have a new user. Or maybe it goes back and forth, so it doesn't have to be a long-term ninety-nine-year lease, it can be a one-year lease at, at a time to see how it's working. And you can keep moving around the city and doing that, that way. Eugene actually does that all the time, if a, if a commercial business goes up and is empty for longer than a month, uh, suddenly you'll see a public parking lot permit on, um, on their, in that parking lot. And you, it'll be a public parking lot until they have a new business come in, and it may only be for six months. But one way it does is it keeps generating traffic on those properties and makes the properties more developable and more interested, more interesting for future developers as well.
Great.
Um, I just wanna point your clarification earlier, um, Amanda said that, uh, we needed to have the public testimony and then have questions from council, are, are we, are we okay asking questions first, or should we have the public testimony first?
Really, we should have the public testimony first, but yes, it's, if we have any further, further questions. Really, we should have the public testimony first, but yes, it's if we have any further further questions.
Hold off on any uh pretty common questions until we have a public testimony.
And I.
Thank you. We have any public testimony?
Haven't had any subs turned in.
Hello, this is Locke Litwer. I'm here. Uh, love to love to talk about this issue for a moment, if this is the right time.
Yeah, please.
Yep, you got five minutes.
Oh, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna need five minutes. Uh. Uh, so.
Locke, I'm just gonna interrupt you really fast. Can you start off by introducing yourself and giving us your address so that we can have it for mailing?
Well, absolutely, certainly. Uh, my, this is Locke Litwer with Columbia Gorge Capital. Um, resident of uh Hood River, uh twenty two oh four Sherman Avenue, nine seven zero three one. And uh, as I think many of you are aware, uh, we also are um the owners through Columbia Gorge Capital of the property just across the street from City Council. Uh, right there on Wanapa. And we are a uh missing middle workforce housing developer. Uh, it's a large part of what we do. And really glad to see you undertaking this process. Um, the work seems to be very thorough and and well thought out. Um, you know, I did have one uh question I emailed with some of you about uh regarding the definitions for multifamily, uh, you know, we uh, you know, we really try to put a lot of work into uh building housing that is, you know, both densified, affordable for uh missing middle and also uh compliant with sort of the 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 community uh scale where we're building. Uh, and when I was speaking with the uh with with the contract planner, it sounded as though the requirements under the current definitions uh are such that you have to have five units attached to each other minimum to build housing in the in the new zoning. Uh, do I understand that correctly?
You're muted.
Do you happen to have the current Jordan definition of multifamily residential or specifically what that would be, Jordan?
Not with me, no.
Um, Locke, you may actually have it with you. If you could read it, I could probably interpret it for you. Um, we actually hadn't originally intended on making a change to the the multifamily residential, but that is certainly something we could you we could add to the Article One ordinance if we wanted to go that path.
Well, I I want to give credit where it's due. I was speaking with uh I always worry if I mispronounce this, uh, Jane Crawford, if I pronounce that correctly, hopefully. Uh, and she wrote that at first look, the downtown zone allows dwelling comma multifamily outright along with quote mixed use apartments end quote. But the code specifically defines quote dwelling multifamily end quote as a single structure containing five or more units cottage development is allowed in the median density residential zone, but not the downtown or commercial zones. So you know, as we understand that as developers, right, that means we're looking at town homes of five units or more minimum in order to even start thinking about putting more housing in that downtown area. And and given the size of most of the lots and given the complexity of their shapes and the uh and the slopes, uh, having to design five contiguous attached units in order to get permitted, you know, that can be really problematic.
I would agree entirely. I'm actually was seeing if I could quickly actually open up a different version of a definition of that would build that would address both issues. Um, I could City Council, one of the options that you could do is just is to address this is change the definition of multifamily residential to rather than being within a structure, it would be three or more or four or more or in this um or continue with the five or more, but on one property rather than within one structure. Just actually how in Cottage Grove we did it. Um, and the way that what that can mean is that you can have thirty seven small, single family detached structures that together make an apartment complex. They don't have to share walls necessarily to be multifamily. Um, so that is certainly something that we could bring forward at the next meeting if that's something everybody wants.
Thanks. I think Locke is done with his comments. Uh, we're opening and we have no more public comment. So Denise, I saw you raise your hand.
Question from Locke. Did you have some, is there a particular definition of multifamily that you've worked with at Hood River that that you like? In relation what Amanda had shared.
Well, I think Amanda's proposed definition of having uh, you know, three or more, four or more, five or more units within a tax lot makes a lot of sense. Uh, I wouldn't want to foreclose on the cottage cluster approach where you have uh individually deeded properties that are co-located. Um, you know, I think that's an important way to promote ownership. Uh, you know, over the long term and uh you just want to make sure that's accommodated there as well.
Thank you, Iris, because you are in this business and uh your input to the the people working on the code, I find useful and and hope that you'll be in touch.
I'm glad you could be here.
Glad glad to be heard. And if I can ever be uh helpful, feel free to reach out. I'm happy to have a bilateral with anybody here.
Okay, I have a question on the um in Article one, Article three on the uh where the statement is residential use along Wanapa is clarified to match medium density residential standards as such, single family homes are no longer included as either permitted or conditionally used permitted uh uh or conditionally permitted uses. Can you explain the reasoning behind that, please?
Um, certainly, this is trying to a uh address the fact that downtown zone is specifically intended to be the heart of the the commercial heart of the city, um, retail and service heart of the city, not a single family residential zone. Single family residential uses take up an enormous amount of space um for one small family use. Um, and within a downtown core, which um were spaces at a premium, having a single family home allowed as a new outright use is really not appropriate to trying to maintain that that pedestrian density of commercial use. So um, we are recommending that it be removed. This is a pretty typical thing that was often allowed um grant sort of grandfathered in and incorporated into codes for communities that were preexisting the development of zoning codes. So if a zoning code got put on top of properties that were already there. And so people were like, meh, we'll just kind of write the code to absorb them. Um, unfortunately, what that means is that you then end up with pockets and holes in your commercial district with all with single family homes. It's fine to have grandfathered uses in and we certainly encourage those uses and those people to stay. Um, but if if for some reason that grandfathering goes away, the people move out and the house becomes vacant for more than six months or it gets demolished, it would be for the the benefit of the community as a whole and to really meet the needs of both the strategic plan, the development code, and in the end, your comprehensive plan to put more higher density development on that property than allowing a single family home to be rebuilt on that property. So we are recommending that single family homes not be encouraged for new development.
And the ones that are already existing, um, I think I read somewhere, there was a lot of reading, um, that they they can rebuild like if they get a permit within a year, if something if something happens, excuse me, let me step back. If something happens to a currently already uh single family dwelling home that is along the downtown Wanapa, they have they can get a permit, if they get a permit within a year, then not necessarily building, but at least get a permit, they will be able to rebuild their home. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think it's a hundred and eighty days they had to get the permit. They don't have to have it built yet. But yes, yes, you're absolutely right. But I'm not, don't, I'm not actually, I don't have the code in front of me with the with the date, the nonconforming.
I saw somewhere that it was a year.
Okay, if it's a year, great, yes. But that is that is considered um nonconforming use, develop a nonconforming uses or nonconforming development. And that is where you would find that in the code. Um, it's also referenced as grandfathering. Um, and so, yes, either way, if you have an existing nonconforming use that is a single family home, you could continue that use so long as you don't let it be vacant for longer than the code allows. Um, or demolished for longer than the code allows without um making efforts to continue that use.
So the whole intent is just to not add any more to what we already have downtown. Um, and then also in um the same section or under conditional conditional use permits, you have a religious assembly uh as a conditional, it would be a conditional use permit. Can you explain that, please?
Yeah, churches are already conditional uses. Um, it is, that's actually continuing your current code. It's just changing the title. Um, it I found it interesting if you looked at the original um development code, the churches and religious institutions are that term is used kind of in three different ways into code. So I was trying to make it one. So we chose, we 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 chose one format to refer it to to reference it as and set wherever it's now labeled, it's always the same for regardless of the different zoning district. But churches have been conditional and I would recommend that they stay conditional. That's largely because of the oddity of a church um and their operations. Um, it if a church is an outright use or a regular use, they may end up with a really large parking lot that they don't need because they have a really high occupancy for one afternoon on a Sunday and then maybe Wednesday night. Instead, it's better to look at those as conditional uses where you're actually looking at how they're going to work within the property and within the neighborhood and maybe they can share a parking lot because they have a different building next door that doesn't work on Sundays. So things like that. So it they actually typically work better as conditional uses.
Um, and then in such in Article five and gosh, uh, on page ten, I don't, I don't know if anybody wants to get there. Uh, B two, it says that trees having a six inch diameter or greater ours or greater diameter four feet from the base shall be preserved or replaced by new plantings. Um, is there, should we stipulate by what size of kind of plantings? Because I remember, I don't know how long it was ago, when all the trees got cut down in front of it's before a lot of people here, but I don't know Bernard was part of it. Mary Ann couldn't remember. I asked her, but a while back the hotel, the Best Western cut down all their trees out in front. It were nice sized trees and then they put a tiny little saplings, which have taken fifteen twenty years to, okay, maybe.
They had to take the trees off because it was destroying the sidewalk.
Okay.
So so a new rule came in. I mean, they had to take take them out because the sidewalk was buckling. And so ODOT approved, and I think the city approved a different way of putting trees in and particular trees so that they didn't mess up sidewalks.
Okay, well, my question is, can we stipulate that they have to be at least a certain diameter to be put back? I mean, because what you go from a nice tree down to a tiny little sapling, I mean, it just looks it looks pathetic because I mean, and that's the first thing people see when they come down off of the bridge. It's the first thing you see when you come in town. I, you know, I just, I wonder if we should mitigate that it should be specific size when they get replanted and not just tiny little saplings. I don't, I don't, I don't want to make it more cumbersome, but I also want to keep the downtown looking nice. If people cut down a tree, they should replace it with a somewhat close to size tree. I don't know.
Yeah, that's Amanda, can you give us some idea of different ways cities have done that? How have they?
Yeah. I apologize. I was actually looking to see if I could find the section you were specifically referencing.
It's on page, it's on page ten of the.
Whatever.
Yeah, I I found it, the problem the problem is, is that the landscaping standards are actually in Article Four, which we're not touching at the moment. Um, so, yes, you can specify what size tree um and a site designer view under landscaping for parking lots or street trees that what size diameter of a species and even the species that you want. If you wanted to go that far, um, of course, as this is a state highway, we would have to work with ODOT to um make sure that they're in concurrence with a standard that we would place for a tree within the right of way or adjacent to the right of way of state highway. But um, it could happen. I didn't actually address Article Four at this time because the landscaping wasn't something that really came up within our process as being something that the public was overly concerned about. But um, and I expect that that what we may end up doing is at the end of this process, have a list of other things in the code that we might want to change is in what as well. And so you would see something come back to you again with now that we've done these things, we need to do some others. So Jordan, take notes.
Did you find what I was talking about in section five? Is section five, page ten?
I did, yeah.
So I, yeah, I don't know. So is that something we should address here or we should wait for section four? I mean, I I.
I think that would, that would be really something you would address on new, um, where you're talking about putting in new rather than talking about basically here is talking about things that have been removed and you have to replace them. But the replacement standard would be elsewhere typically.
Okay.
So what even then, a parking lot is something that we want to return to at a later date. At least I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, because it was, it was sad. I mean.
I see Kathy writing things down.
Yeah. And then, um, do we know how big Thunder Island, Thunder Island Brewing is and how many square feet does it have? Have like, yeah, so do you have a guess?
I do not.
Because I would be curious to see how that uh relates to the reducing of the one space per five hundred to one space per thousand because it's, I mean, it's already it's already really, parking is really awful and I would hate to see less parking, but I understand I understand the complexity of it. I understand. But I I mean, we live, uh Councilmember Seager and I both live on a street that is continually, well, and um Emily Baker, we live on a street that continually congested all summer long that won't be able to get fire apparatus through because we have parking on both sides of it to, I'm sure some of it's overflow for T I P, but a lot of it's probably from the whiskey flats. And I just, I mean, I don't know. Parking is the big thing. I mean, it's just, it's something we have to.
I mentioned it to Council Seager, Councilman Seager, that we were, this is part of a strategy. So reducing the code requirement to allow new development to actually come in um while also addressing and the development of new public parking lots that are off street is the our first, the first two pieces. The third, though, is also then trying to address the residential overflow and potentially actually looking at signage for residential area parking only to encourage the commercial people to not park there or require that they don't. And then eventually maybe even actually doing timed parking in certain areas where the residential folks get a permit so that they don't have to worry about that, but you have a timed parking for others. There's so there's a number of different strategies that we could implement that citywide that will help all of those problems. And they really need to all come together. Because without the public off street parking, you don't have anywhere for those people to go. You can start telling people, no, you can't come here, but unless you provide them someplace to go, that doesn't really help. So we need to find the new places for them to go before we can then start getting them off of the places we don't want them.
One more thing, and article uh still in Article Five on page twenty nine um, under the standards point E. I I think there's something missing in that in that because it says the height of the A R U shall not and then it just goes to the height limit of the zone. So I think there's kind of something, there's a point missing there somewhere.
Yeah, I thought that was.
Yeah.
We will take note of that and fix that for the next time.
Okay.
Hi, folks. Are we still in public hearing here for the um? Sorry, for the for the code update?
We're out of public comment, but we are still in the public hearing.
Oh, we're out of public comment. Sorry then. I will mute myself.
But that.
Council, you do have the option of of reopening up public testimony and accepting more testimony.
Yeah, and I think if everybody's open to that, I think, you know, yeah, what do you have, Locke?
Yes, I I appreciate that very much. Uh, so uh Mayor Wood, Council, uh, Ms. Ferguson, uh, I understood you to be talking about the concern about uh, single family homes in this downtown district. I share that concern. I just wanted to make sure that uh that I highlight the distinction between single family home and uh and cottage community. Uh, I I know it's a little fuzzy for some folks sometimes. I I know it's a little fuzzy for some folks sometimes. You know, but there's a big difference between the density that you get in a cottage community where you're talking about. These homes have a nine hundred square foot footprint. Uh, and you can really arrange them in a way that is very efficient. Uh, and has ownership versus single-family homes where you have a, you know, a five thousand to seven thousand square foot lot with a. Twenty-five hundred square foot home, three thousand square foot home on that. And it's just a completely different animal. You know, one of them really is multifamily, one of them really is not. So I just wanted to highlight that and I really appreciate your forbearance and opening up the comment for that.
Thank you.
Ask him if he's done and then we can close.
And close the public hearing for right now.
I'm done. No more comments, I promise. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, we're we're not going to close the public hearing.
Right, that's right.
Denise, do you have another question?
I just wanted to point out that. That I did look through these codes and we talked a lot about during the strategic. The downtown revitalization committee meetings that would have to be changed to meet the strategic plan. And I wanted to say that. Because of the downtown revitalization plan that this council passed. The main street cascade locks received a four hundred thousand dollar grant. From Oregon Main Street Yay for moving up. And this was a big part because of the community input we could prove that we had and the plan that we were meeting and the goals. And there is a lot of research to support. The the to support the thriving downtown and a little district from Bridge of the God down to. Uh, basically the cemetery down here that we. And and the codes that are helping to meet the just the the goals that research say help a town thrive. Because we need that infrastructure. We need that density of housing downtown to support the businesses in the winter when the tourists aren't coming or they're not going to be here in the summer. That's it. That's there are research to show. Folks come downstairs, they go get their food, they go back up to their condo, their apartment, their little cottage cluster house. So I just think that it's very exciting and. That I know that I really feel like the little main street cascade locks would not have received our four hundred thousand dollar grant. Twenty eighth page grant that we wrote if if we didn't have this data and if the city had and it supports the strategic plan. For the whole city, which is even greater, and the ports plan, which includes strategic plan downtown development. So I just want to say that this this plan and the and the. The the efforts that we wrote in that we are getting code to meet this plan, I believe was very. To that and and our main street is still. Existing with the state of Oregon in two years, it looks like there's money to apply again and cities that have been lead at once. When we keep showing that we are going through on our plan, often receive it again. So that's it's just exciting. It's all building on actually making a difference. So, yay.
Eric, cheers.
Um, I want to have a conversation or get consensus now, a conversation about. Um, exempting or not, what's the proper word looking for? Not allowing ARUs to be used for short-term rentals. That they should only be used for long-term rentals. The same one as you had.
Okay.
I I I don't see that in the vote and I would like for that to be discussed.
So that got changed then because right now they're not allowed.
I just want to make sure interviews are not allowed for short-term rental.
They are not.
Okay. Thank you. Bernard, you have a question?
Yeah, well, I have a question. So I was I was stationed in the army in Europe for three years and got to actually live in Germany, you know? And I lived in a small old town near our post and, you know, it had like a, it had a central square. And then they would bring the church bells, you know, in the morning and the afternoon and the evening. And I always thought that was such a neat, you know, experience that was created. Yeah, in that that community, you know? So would our down let's, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but. If we wanted to somehow sometime put a church bell or a type of bell experience for downtown cascade locks, would it allow something like that?
Sure, as long as it's not more than thirty-five feet and it's engineered and meets all the building code requirements. Yeah, it'll be fine.
Awesome. Anybody else have any other comments, questions this evening? Yeah, so Amanda recommended that we don't close the hearing, that we leave it open so we can collect public testimony for another two weeks. So that'd be open through July sixth. Anything else we need to say on that note, Amanda?
No, I mean, that's the sort of minimum of keeping it open. You can also choose to keep it open for another month. It really depends on whether or not you feel like you want, you would like to give the public more opportunity to come in. Um, if you keep it open for two weeks, it would be written testimony only.
So we don't have to continue to a date certain? We can just leave it open?
If you continued it, we'd be continuing it to a date certain to another city council meeting. So yes, you do need to continue it to a date certain one way or another. Either you keep the public record, the written record open for two weeks to a date certain, or you keep the oral record. Open all the way to the next next city council meeting.
And then we close it then? Is that and then we formally close it then?
Yeah, so I guess I just want a clarification. We're continuing continuing it. Intending it to the next council meeting?
That was what I understood was the recommendation is that everybody on the same page with that. Sound good to you?
And I think you should stipulate for written testimony only.
Written testimony only through July sixth. And we're not closing the hearing this evening.
July sixth or seventh?
July seventh is Monday.
Seventh.
The seventh is the next council meeting.
No.
Fourteenth, sorry. Two weeks will be July seventh, though.
Yep.
Right?
Yes, correct.
So when do we then when do we close? When does it get closed?
Two weeks would be the seventh then, I guess.
Just one, okay, so we're.
We'll be continuing it to the next council meeting. You guys are going to do whatever you're going to do at the next council meeting. If I'm understanding correctly, and then it will be closed at that.
Yeah. So it'd be the fourteenth.
Okay, so clarify.
Or read other test, read the written testimony that comes in.
Public testimony can be submitted.
Is that correct, Amanda?
I was recommending that we actually do it on the the meeting that's following that, which would be July twenty eighth, I believe. Um, and the reasoning is because that would give us time as staff to revise the draft ordinances and modify the findings. To address any concerns that have been raised with that written testimony. And I know ODOT wants us to do a little bit of that. And then also meet the requirement that it be ready for a full week before it actually be read by city council. So we needed that extra week in there. We can't meet the fourteenth and get you get get new findings and get them out for public reading. So we need, we we are recommending the twenty eighth of July.
And how late? What do you recommend for written testimony to be received until what day?
Seventh, July seventh is great. That's two weeks of written testimony and then it will give staff two weeks to revise things. And then it will be out for public reading for a week and then you can look at it in the at your July twenty eighth meeting.
Okay, thank you for clarifying those dates. We're all on the same page. Anybody have anything else before you move on? All right, thank you, Amanda. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
All right, moving on to nine A, ten A, excuse me, committee reports?
No committee reports. In your packet was minutes from planning, last planning meeting, but no committee reports.
All right, thank you. And B audit update?
Yep, not too much from the auditors. I did put a new schedule on your desks here this evening. Uh, the analysis follow-up findings is taking longer than I expected. They're now giving us a estimate of middle to end of August to get it wrapped up. But still, as soon as that one is finished, we'll hop right into the next audit.
And ten C? Oh, yeah, go ahead. The twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. And then I guess the current fiscal year, those are the crazy ones, like.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean. This one, twenty-two, twenty-three is probably the craziest because there's so much change with our previous finance officer leaving, bringing in now CFO. There was a lot of change going on. I was still new as well. So this one is probably out of all of them, the worst one and should get smoother.
So. The last time we saw one of these, we were still on track and remind me. Uh, my understanding of like end of May, all our field work was done. And then like we were, we were anticipating it done like mid-June, is that right?
I I anticipated end of June, but I was wrong. They're they're going through, they have a lot of lot of follow-up questions and findings that they're they're doing. And part of it I know is is. A lot of their staff are on vacation before the big audit season kicks in. So there's, it's kind of a lull for them as well. That's part of the issue. Um, but it's it's a messy audit.
Okay, well, I mean. I only speak for myself, but uh, this continues to have high urgency in my opinion.
Oh, yes.
And, you know, if we need to. If we need to. Add more hours for our finance officers. You know, week to get whatever, whatever they have follow-up questions on. I think we should do that. I feel like we bring them in on a Saturday. I I would like to be date twenty-two, that 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 feels like we're slipping.
I I I agree.
And so I I'm just making my my case that let's, you know. When they have questions, we should turn around like, you know, within a day or two, you know? And then it's always on them. And again, even when it's on them, then we're putting pressure on them like, what do you need? You know, how can we make this thing go faster? Because, you know, as we've heard through the budget process. We are living on this cloud uncertainty until we get our audits up to date. And I don't like the cloud. I know my fellow council members don't like it. So I'm just asking to push staff.
Yep.
More so we can get this.
Yeah, and this is, this is the finance director's top priority. Anytime we get an email from them, anything comes through, this is top priority.
Okay, but just just to look at this a little second more, so let's. Let's go with the current plan that it's not done until eight twenty-two. So, uh, you've talked to Aldrich and they can start the twenty-three, twenty-four on nine-one. Is that, am I hearing that accurately?
Yes, they they will, um. I don't know if it's completely accurate, but as soon as they wrap up the twenty-two, twenty-three audit, they will turn around for a list of documents. Um, or or whatever they call it. Provided client documents right away. So early August or early September, sorry. Yep.
And then for what it's worth, because I feel like milestones create accountability. I would like, my request is that you and the finance sit down with Aldrich and map out from a nine-one start date. What does proposed completion look like? And then again, we know that, that's on our radar now versus this big unclear TBA. I I would like them to map that out. And again, that's kind of how you hold folks accountable. You know, we have clear milestones. And then we can push hard and and get this thing put to bed. So, okay, that's my only comments. Thank you.
And I don't know what other counselors think about this, but I'd also like to see if we're making changes to the dates. The whole date isn't completely gone. Maybe we one-line it and then we can explain, you know, what the change was. I'm looking at eight twenty-two and I don't know that there's.
Yeah.
What about the prior date? I don't.
Yeah, I thank you.
Yeah, it's just sort of like when we see other.
Yes, exactly. Now on for that as well.
Anything else on the audit? Sorry, I started to move things along there. Okay. City Administrator Benner report, ten C?
Um, handful of items, budget adoption. As I said in my email last week, the public noticed to hold the second hearing. On the spending estate shared, I missed that typo. Revenue spending was missed. It has now been noticed as well as renoticed the budget review and adoption. The second hearing and budget review slash adoption will be held at seven PM on Monday, June thirtieth, a week from tonight. It will be a special meeting. Uh, water rate work sessions. Staff are developing materials to hold a work session at six PM on Monday, July fourteenth to discuss the water rate changes. Is there still consensus from council to hold that work session on the fourteenth? Okay. Seeing a lot of nodding heads. Uh, also on the fourteenth, North Wasco Public Utilities District has approached the city about taking over operations and maintenance of our electrical system. Staff has had conversations to get more details. Uh, North Wasco, however, is ready to meet and discuss with council. Uh, attached with this report is a similar agreement North Wasco has with the Dallas Irrigation District. Uh, I tried to get as much information from them in in terms of of cost and materials. And they went, nope, we want to talk to your council. Okay, so they plan to be here on the fourteenth to discuss this policy. It would essentially, we'd be hiring one of their crews to be our linemen. We would still keep our operation specialists to do some of the smaller, uh, day-to-day. Shutting off red tag, things like that, helping put budgets together. But they, North Wasco would do, provide the linemen, the crew, the trucks, the inventory. They mean, they would do all of that. They would do any maintenance work, vegetation management, undergrounding work. We would schedule all that with them. They'd also provide estimates. Right now Derek's doing a lot of it for the residential. Uh, they would do the estimates, they would for, we're both residential, commercial, they would take over I G S I mapping for our electrical system. So it's it's the whole shebang of of everything except the actual billing of of residents. That would still be our, so it'd still be our department. We'd still set the rates, we'd still collect the money. They would invoice us for the work done. But like I said, I tried to get more detail and they pretty much said, we want to talk to your council. Where it goes from there, I I don't know. I I I think the idea is is worth exploring. But whether it'll actually end up being feasible for the city, I don't know.
What caused them to do this?
They are on.
No, no, I was thinking.
Well, uh. They have more money than they know what to do with, with with Google and them. And they are on like the cusp of hiring an additional, I think, a fourth crew. For their services and they're expanding their territory. They're also talking to that little chunk of Pacific Power that's between them and Hood River. So they're they're looking to expand. Um, and so having us on board would justify them hiring that fourth crew. So they would, I would like to have them stationed here as their main priority, but again, if needed, they could go to the DOWs. But things would work out in the details. They're 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 just looking to expand. I think they see our struggle as a small utility, especially with hiring. We'll see what happens when we put the job descriptions or the recruitments out, but they see that there's a need and they're, A, they're willing to fill it and B, they're looking to expand. So.
So you said a lineman, but did you say journeyman too?
Yeah, it'd be the full crew. Yeah.
And know how does, what does Derek think about?
Uh, he's on the fence about it. Yeah.
Right.
So right now, they're only providing contract services for the Dallas Irrigation District?
This would, I don't know all they have, but this is the sample they gave.
Okay, because that's very different from what.
Yes, it is. Yes, it's very different, but I think it was more for the kind of scope of work if you look at that. Oh, gosh, um, where was it?
I could make it fit in our situation.
Yeah, exhibit A, statement of work, statement of services way at the back. Um, really kind of those are the core items, maintenance in rebuilding of of electrical systems. Inspection services, engineering services, and then purchasing your primitive parts. So we wouldn't have to, we'd essentially, if if we did this, what I would think is all of our line trucks, we'd get rid of. Our inventory we carry would be gone. They would carry it all. They would essentially be the the one contract crew we call for all of our work.
So I, uh, yeah, I'd want to know how that would work in a in a storm.
Oh, yeah, there's there's lots of details to figure out, a lot, yeah.
If they if they had door storm damage and we have storm damage, who's going to be the first priority? I mean, and and are are we even going to be?
I mean, I don't know that the complete history of the gorge, but from what I've learned in talking to people, it's not very often we get hit by a storm and the DOWs. I mean, it's either vice versa. But again, I could be wrong.
Well, I I'm I'm open to this conversation. Some of you heard me advocate for the the city considering. The contracting out or 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 making our fire and AMS services. A contract with the city of the river or maybe if there was a county fire district. I I kind of poked that idea a little more and I remembered that Gresham provides fire and AMS for. Wood Village. and EMS for Wood Village, obviously the city of Gresham, but also Wood Village and Fairview.
And Troutdale.
Oh, and Troutdale, okay. Out of curiosity, I wonder what what Wood Village is paying for their fire and EMS service on an annual basis? And I was shocked, Wood Village is a town of three thousand, I don't know what their call volume is, but they're twice the size of us, and their twenty-twenty-four contract for service was five hundred thousand dollars, which is a lot less than we're spending for fire and EMS. We just saw the budget, we just adopted. Now, I know those costs haven't changed in a while, and they are in a vicious negotiation right now for increasing that from five hundred thousand. But even if it ended up at eight hundred thousand, you know, that's still, I think, a very competitive cost for those services. And, you know, I, I have a lot of experience with this, it started when I worked in Shoreline in Washington, and we contracted out for police service with Keene County, and but we were a city of fifty thousand. And, and so we had a massive, quote, police department, but it was a Keene County service. And it worked well from a price perspective, because we, like, every five years, should we do this in-house? We would run through the numbers, study and come close to doing it in-house versus contracted ones, always much more cost competitive. And, you know, what we learned is that, as the customer, you know, they're serving us, we're the customer, you can demand exactly what you want that police department to look like. The vehicles didn't say Keene County on it, they said city of Shoreline Police. So citizens have no idea there was a Keene County, uh, police officer running around town, like, that we aren't cared for. A lot of the cops lived in town, you know, so this can work. I just, I just hope council will be open to these types of arrangements, as we talk about how do we deliver efficient government services. I think all these things should be in consideration, and sometimes they can make a lot of sense. So I just want to put my two cents out there.
Thank you.
Right, I just want to ask, on the EMS contract with Wood Village, does that also include ambulance?
No, it does not, they have AMR.
So that's a complete, yeah, nurses combined, so.
Correct. But again, that's a moneymaker per se, so you almost consider that service a wash. So that concerned me a little, but not too much, you know, so, anyway, I just, you know.
And I'm with you, I'd like to see where the number is and how it compares to what we're looking at right now for doing this in-house, and, you know, whether we can simplify our operations.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted prime counsel that that discussion was coming.
From a, you know, I like the idea, though, of also being completely self-sufficient, and, you know, these are good-paying jobs that potentially could bring people into town, I mean, you know, and having people that live here in our community, you know, in these roles, you know, we have an emergency situation, you know, we've got people here to deal with it, and best.
And what if we resolve the on-call situation? I mean, what, how would that, how would that work? I mean, because they live forty minutes away, maybe, I mean, would they have to be in town for that? I mean, what?
I think these are questions for us to start thinking of, I'd love to get a presentation, and let's ask.
Yeah.
But if they're nearby now, so glad they can have to live here, absolutely.
Anyway, great questions.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything else on that subject?
Yeah, like I said, just wanted to prime everyone for that, that's, I I tried to, I, I wanted all these answers, these questions answered before it got to you, but they they were adamant, they wanted to talk to council, so.
I don't think you must own with this report.
No, no, we're just moving on to the next.
Question on the council report.
Yes.
Yeah, a couple more items, obviously, Fourth of July, city hall will be closed for observance on July third. I did kind of, as you probably all saw, reforded my my weekly updates, trying to redevelop that, just, you know, work with me as I retune that to get council the information they want. McCord Creek Vault removal relocation issue with ODOT is on the move, the work is going to start tomorrow. They're going to start boring the new line tomorrow and get the vault moved. It shouldn't shouldn't take more than two weeks, is what I'm told, assuming no issues. Last item, and Denise stole my thunder a little bit, couple grants have been awarded in the city of Cascade Locks. I can't remember the name, is it Hoke, Hook, that owns the fire station?
Hoikers.
Hoikers, drawn a blank, Hoikers who own the fire station, got a grant to remodel that building, four hundred thousand dollars. And then Crickfit Columbia River Intertribal Fish Commission got a grant from Travel Oregon for almost fifty-seven thousand dollars to fund a feasibility study to develop a tribal marketplace pavilion down in that parking lot close to the bridge. So lots of, lots of things going on.
Sure. I just want to clarify that Main Street Capitol Box got the grant.
Oh, did they? Okay.
Yes, and we, for the Hoikers, we submitted the Hoiker project with Buddy's Arcade, so that's what the project is.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Main Street Capitol.
Tiffany, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just have a question on the failure to public notice, um, for the sharing thing, who's responsible?
That was just complete oversight on my end, yeah.
And then I was just going to make a request, that when we, we had some people during the budget review that were not present, you know, we had some people just didn't make it, and if, my request is that when we have meetings that we need to attend, is it possible to send those out as a meeting invite? You know, so, you know, that way they do our calendar?
Yeah.
I don't know how many of you rely on your calendar the way I do, but I find that to be really helpful, and I think some of the people that maybe missed those meetings, it was just, they didn't, it was just an oversight, they didn't have it on the calendar and they forgot.
Well, it was on an odd day too.
Yes.
Yeah, that that's easy enough.
Cool, thanks. And I like your, the the weekly roundup, I like the the name of that, because it really does, I think, encompass the idea that you're getting information from the other departments and that, that's supposed to be wrapped in this all your own, so.
Yeah.
And I just want to say, on on that, this, to me, this feels like a, like a once-in-a-month sort of thing, I'm not asking for this, like, I, I'm not personally asking for this for every week, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, these first kind of initial ones to get everybody up to speed on some stuff, it'd probably be a little bit longer than than the others going forward, yeah. No, agreed, yeah, I don't want to spend an entire day writing those things, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure I get the initial kind of information, get everybody, you know, what's been said, maybe things have been missed, so.
Excellent. Mayor and Council of Commons, start with you, Denise?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, I have, I'm going to type my letters, I've been quite busy, but my officially day that we're moving, I'll stay on council till July first, and I'll write a letter of resignation, and I hope that I have you move forward as we have, looking for others, but I hope that I feel, I feel like, oh no, I want to be here for the boat on the, on the codes, and I want to be here for it, but it's really hard to let it go.
Let it go.
I know, but I'm moving, I don't think legally, Kathy was legal, let me, say I counsel if I live in Portland, so.
Nope.
Moving down on the river and that all worked out and keeping my home as a rental, so yay, I'm getting a local management person to help manage that when it gets ready to rent in July. And I just wanted to say thank you, that, and I feel really proud that I've been here for this strategic plan, that this city passed, I'm proud of that plan, and I'm proud of the downtown revitalization plan, and I really hope, I suppose I could speak to it as a property owner, that you'll look closely at those quotes and know that a lot of public input went into those, and a lot of experts, as you can hear, Amanda knows a lot, and that whole team. So I've been proud of that, exciting that we started the Main Street at this little city Cascade Locks from a legal Oregon cities meeting when I first, and then we moved and and applied, and we are now an affiliated nonprofit, so there's a president who's very excited to do things. We're continuing, I'll be the Building Revitalization Grants Manager, working with my kid on this, but because of, it's a reimbursement grant that Main Street gets, so we have to watch that the receipts come in from the Hoikers that meet the architectural historic standards, national standards, and they were very, I want to thank Yan Hoiker and Albert Nance, and Bande Darnett of Bike the Gorge, who worked, we probably spent three months writing that grant, so it was very exciting that, and went to these meetings so that the the Hoikers know exactly what they're allowed to do. So it's a revitalization, and I love that it's at national standards. So yay on that, and because of the Main Street Cascade Locks, because we existed as a member of Oregon Main Street and Main Street America, Shelley, at the Ale House, they were able to get the fifty thousand dollar store grant. So, so bear in mind, as you're looking forward to economic development in downtown, if folks from Main Street come, or we're working so much with the port and even the tourism, but Main Street is more about making a level downtown for the community that lives here. And there's a lot of research to show that when you do that, you get outside people coming in too, but it's about the community here, so, so bear that in mind, and that's been something I'm proud of. And just note that as I leave, we all, we all try to be bipartisan and speak for the community, and we all have a certain group that we hang out with or talk to. And so, you know, if Mayor Wood says, oh, I've heard from citizens, it's probably citizens that maybe haven't shared that with me, and I hear something from citizens that maybe haven't shared that with her. So I hope you'll bear in mind, I've heard from a lot of folks who watch these meetings, and now that we can say, yay, we got our place, so we're moving, and said, maybe I'd be interested in applying that. You'll bear in mind, as you listen to the folks who may apply, the different constituents that they represent, too, that if my piece is missing, that you'll take that into account, among many other things. And just thank you all for working together and staying positive and and helping keep Cascade Locks beautiful. We, we're keeping the house for several reasons, that we might come back here, but we're moving closer to my husband's port, and closer to our son, and I'm getting a lot more equity training jobs nationally, I have three the next week, so closer to the airport, too. So thank you, that was my big, I'll get the letter in for July first, so you can make your plans moving forward as to how you.
All for legacy.
And people.
Thank you, Denise.
Bernard? Yeah, so just a few things, one, regarding the city administrator update, I really liked the the first, you know, effort you've put together, I mean, that level of understanding, again, gives me a greater appreciation of all the things that you're working on, which I didn't, you know, it wasn't fully clear to me. And I just think it's an excellent tool, again, to track your work and also keep us informed, so I really appreciate you stepping forward that, and, you know, we're going to function better if we're better informed. And again, this helps you manage all those moving vaults, it's a very hard job, someone who's done it, so I hope that that tool becomes useful to you. I know I'm brave before, so thank you.
Yeah, even I forget some of the stuff I'm working on.
I can imagine, yeah, no, it's a, it's a, it's a very turbulent experience, that job. Second thing, you know, I'm a big fan of public service, and the reason I promote, you know, folks picking up litter is not only just to keep the town clean, but just to kind of connect with something that's kind of greater than yourself, right? And I really, I think there's something to that, about, you know, bringing folks together and 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 valuing, you know, valuing our community as this great entity. I have started a Scotch broom clearing project off Dry Creek Road, yes, that's, these all these scars on my arms, because there's a lot of blackberries up there, whether it's Scotch broom, there's blackberries. And it's been a loop, you know, I've been working two or three hours a day for like the last two weeks, and if you go up there on the left side of the road, just the first, I don't know, several hundred yards, there's no more Scotch broom, it's all gone, you know? Now, it's in piles, you'll see dead piles of Scotch broom, which I'm going to turn into firewood, or burn pile, you know? But I guess I'm mentioning this story to think, you know, I feel like there's probably some poor kids, you know, looking for something to do, and I just kind of want to open up, if someone wants to join me in some Scotch broom removal, please reach out and contact me, and I'll get you busy helping me out. And, you know, we're doing it not just because Scotch broom is a terrible invasive weed, because it is, but that land up there was logged about, I don't know, six, ten years ago. And in Oregon, when you log a piece of land, you have to replant, it's a Oregon Forest Practices Act, you know, adopted by state law, and, and that that owner did replant. But inevitably, you you're clearing the Scotch broom, you'll see a tiny little seedling struggling for light, nutrients, and water, and it's really, its growth is suppressed because of the Scotch broom. So you get rid of Scotch broom, and those trees are in happy city, you know, and they're going to, you know, have a lot more growth ahead of them. So you're helping improve that forest health, you know, and removing an obtuse weed, which I, by the way, is right next to Forest Service land, and we don't want it, you know, graduating in that as well, becoming more of a nuisance and then suppressing more forest growth. There's lots of wins by doing it, and I don't know what I, I don't know how to explain it, but just doing some some manual labor, it's just good for your soul. I don't know what it is, but I feel so good when I come off the mountain with scratched up arms and tired, you know, and, yeah, it's it's good stuff. So I just want to put that out to the public and say, come join me, and I think you might get a kick out of it.
Where are you doing?
Off of Dry Creek Road, if you just, the gravel road that goes up, it flattens out, you know, once you get off the hill, and that flattened part on both sides of the road is just, there's a serious Scotch broom invasion, and we're gonna, we're taking it to town, so.
Thank you, Bernard.
Thanks.
Tiffany?
Okay, so I have a few things, I'm surprised you didn't say this, but this packet was way too much, this was like six hours of reading, I mean, and I don't do that again, please. It was, I, can we, could we have not like wrote this up into smaller portions? Because, I mean, this was, this was a lot of, a lot of, a lot of reading. I'm, I forgot to ask Amanda when she was on, and maybe you can ask her on her, on her UVO report, in the report, on page, page nine, this thing, I cannot read it, can we get something?
Oh, the the conditional, non, the permitted, non-conditional, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just, yeah, I, I can't, it's unreadable, yeah, it's, it's pretty tiny. So if we can get a bigger, bigger one of that, I would really appreciate that. Are we doing the courthouse, courthouse plows, are getting those flowers planted? I mean, one of yours is like a week.
Um, they planted the seedlings two weeks ago, about two weeks ago, yeah, the ground cover, yeah.
Seedlings.
Yep.
Um, also, reading through this packet, a lot of the lighting restrictions say that we, they're, that they have to shield them, so does the city also have to shield their lights? I mean, it says that they're supposed to be, I'll see maybe the exact verbiage, all building entrances and exits must be well, okay, so this has to do with exits and entrances, but the minimum lighting level for building entries and exits is four-foot candles, and the source of light must be shielded to reduce glare. So I just wondered if that's a standard that the city has to uphold as well. And I'll talk to you after the meeting about something that I saw last night, but also it sounded like, I just saw that boy came, that the port got their funding for their bridge project, so, a hundred.
For the river.
Yeah, the port.
Oh, yeah, I hadn't, hadn't seen that, yeah.
Yeah, a hundred five million in portions, so thank you to Mr. Healthbridge and all those who work on that, and including what we learned hopefully tonight, hopefully that gets through. And then I want to say to Denise, you, people ask me, when people ask me about you, I would say, she's a very intelligent person, I've never once thought that you were unintelligent, and you're very, very, you know, different insights, and you have a lot of wealth of knowledge and energy beyond that I can keep up with. I don't, you, you had your, you were everywhere and all in one place at the same time, so, and Jackie Chan will certainly be missed, I'm sure. But I appreciate your, 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 your energy and the time you've invested in our small town and all the work that you did and are doing to continue to, you know, make, make it the best that it can possibly be. Thank you, Bernard.
Um, I think tonight and the.
Um, I think tonight and the people entering into the executive session reminded me about moving. Our meetings to YouTube and the idea on how to do that and, um, I, I. I mean, everything I know about public meetings comes from the school board, but they provide links to the Zoom, meaning if, if you're gonna present. And it's a very structured, if you wanna present, this is how you do it. And so that we don't end up with people interrupting executive sessions or flirting or typing or doing anything. But if you're just wanting to watch, just watch on YouTube, um. Secondly, um, Ms. Pruitt asked about the seedlings at the, the downtown area, and I was curious who's in charge of the trash there. The trash cans that are there.
Oh, we are, are you talking the kind of mesh, metal mesh ones?
Cause they don't have trash bags and it looks.
I'll, I'll talk to Sheldon, we'll get it taken care of tomorrow.
Um, oh, there was one, oh, the speed radar sign is still out.
Is it?
Which one, you talking about the county one or the one that we put up?
The county one that's right at the bottom of the new development.
The trailer.
So the trailer, yeah, kinda, yep, no, that's so.
Okay.
I, I don't know if they need a new battery, I mean, it seems as though this is not charging from the solar, I don't know.
Yeah, I will talk to them again.
Thought I had something else, but I guess I don't.
Ian?
I just have, uh, one question, um, a citizen came to me. And asked me about this, and I know about this eagle that Soderbergh is, is doing, it's a large eagle. It's in flight. And it used, it was at one time coming to our city, and they were talking about displaying it across. And that vacant lot, and she asked, why did the council stop that? And so I'm just asking, has anybody, uh. Heard when that eagle is coming this way, or?
I, I have a vague memory of talking to them about it like a year ago.
It's been a while ago, um, since I remember, but I was just unfounded when the citizen said, I heard. That's why I'm bringing it up, a council, a counselor or a council. Said, no, we're not gonna have it here, and I just was wondering if anybody else had heard that.
No idea, I didn't even know it was supposed to go here, to be honest.
Yeah, I haven't heard that, it would be up to them and a property owner.
You know, um, it was just something that, that, I don't know whether it's tourism or whomever wanted to have it here. Maybe it was Soderbergh's, I don't know, to display for a little bit before it heads up to Arlington DC.
That'd be cool.
I can't imagine, I don't remember my time here, anybody suggesting that or saying no, or.
Oh, I didn't either, that's why I'm asking, because. I don't know what the process is, I don't know where they're at, I know it's at Goldendale. But, um.
That would be there, you know, there.
But I remember.
Deal.
They didn't ask if they would bring it here, so I don't know, when I was working.
For Fourth of July, that'd be.
It would be, I.
And I don't even know if it's done yet.
There's a, I don't know, Janice seems to know everything, I'll reach out to Janice.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, cause I think honestly, I think.
That would be very cool, yes.
Be able to see it, I mean, it doesn't actually be here forever, but.
Just like a random somebody here too, I mean, when I actually crash in a truck now, I see that.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Well, uh, thank you everybody for, uh, your patience, uh, it's been a while since I've sat in a seat in one of these meetings, so definitely there's some things I've forgotten, I appreciated you.
You're fired.
Fortunately, I think I'm gonna have to do it again, but you know, I had, I had, um, and then also it's just the shuffling of the agenda tonight, trying to make good use of our time. So I'm not just sitting here, um, but I also know that for us, it puts a little bit of labor on us trying to find where we are in our packet. So just really appreciate your patience with that, uh, very good news though, and really happy to hear, uh, news from our lobbyist, um. You know, so fingers crossed that it goes through and looking forward to July when this is all done, um. And then, uh, also just wanna say, that's super exciting, uh, and really wanna say thank you to Denise for all of your work. And, you know, creating the Main Street program to begin with, cause it was you that really brought that to us originally, uh, the council to, to begin that. And if we didn't have a Main Street program, it wouldn't have evolved to what it is now, and we wouldn't have been eligible for that, uh. And obviously that was one piece of the puzzle, but it was a big part of it, so thank you. Um, and then to tap into comments I heard from other, uh, counselors and also kind of following up on what you were saying as part of our giant packet. Uh, I wonder if when we're actually going to review the articles and adopt those by resolution, uh, as action items, if we can break them up. Uh, you know, if people are open to that, I, I, I certainly don't wanna try to read all of these, and, and I wanna do my due diligence. And actually spend the time that's needed, and I think trying to go through more than two of them, and then, you know, one meeting would probably be, uh. Tough for me, uh. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, that, that's my request, that, you know, the mayor is kind of the, uh, with, with the administrator, like, everybody, that's enough for council. Don't give them, you know, ideally, she would go two hundred pages, you're not doing that to my counselor, you know? And she would curve this to a, a manageable, you know, uh, 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 consumption, you know, uh, batch. And I trust her to do that, but what we got to me was, it felt like I was climbing a, you know, a, a, a ten thousand foot mountain, you know?
And I, I would just say that I, I, I mean, community development code amendments look so innocuous. I mean, who knew it was gonna be a hundred and whatever pages it is? And, um, I, and I wanted to recommend that if you haven't read it yet, uh, for the section, Article Five, that you should read the University of Oregon report first. Before you vote on that, because it answers a lot of questions that you're gonna have in that, so. I'm gonna save you the effort, cause I read Article Five first and had a whole bunch of questions and then read the, uh, the report, and it got a lot of them answered, so.
And that was feedback I heard from other counselors too, that they would have liked to have seen that report at the beginning.
Yeah, so, but yeah, I, I would agree, let's break it up, somebody.
So I, I, I agree with, you know, Bernard, I think I trust our mayor and, and the city administrator to, you know, exercise their judgment and not overload us. You know, allow us to read through these things and give them the time that they really need, uh, and, uh.
And I would think it would be forthcoming for you to say, hey, you know, this one is gonna be like a hundred and some pages. So she's not gonna know until she gets the package, it must be like, oh my gosh, I did not realize that that was all that, so, uh, just some community, some.
That's a big clarification, that's sometimes when you're looking at the agenda, you don't know what's all gonna be behind that.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, and then on the trailer, I, I like to be solution focused, and I'm just wondering, um, I know that when we had sign trucks at the ski resort. We'd have to plug them in regularly and they, you know, we didn't have solar panels on those things at, at the ski resort, but they had to be plugged in every single night. And I just wonder if logistically, if it would be helpful for the sheriff's office, if they had a place here in town where they could actually plug that thing in. Um, you know, overnight from now to time, so that way they don't have to try to tow this thing all the way back to the sheriff's office to plug it in. Maybe that would be helpful, cause I see that thing turned off more than on.
Well, maybe the solar panel's working.
Yeah.
Yeah, no doubt old that thing is, yeah.
It's not getting the sunshine rays it needs, I don't know.
Yep.
But I know that, you know, the deep cycle batteries, if you discharge them below fifty percent, they start to lose capacity over time as well, so if they keep getting run to zero. They're not gonna work very long. And that's all I have, oh, and I guess real quick, I just wanna say, uh, I am sorry.
No, come.
Uh, just the, the, uh, budget process, I just wanna comment on that really quick, and I know it was, I mean. What's that, I know we got another. Yes, uh, so yeah, we do have a meeting on Monday, seven o'clock, special meeting, we're gonna get an invite for that via email. And that'll be for everybody on the, that's just for council. The, but I just wanna comment on the way that I feel like a board should really work effectively together. It's about compromise, not every one person's gonna get everything they wanted, um. But I, the way that that wrapped up at the end, uh, where everybody was kind of working together trying to find some solutions that we could all agree on. Nobody got what they wanted, but we all were able to find a solution that worked for everybody, and I guess that was my favorite part of the whole, uh, you know. Uh, meeting and to see you actually vote and approve, it was like, I was like, I'm gonna be really happy, uh, so I just really wanted to say. I thought it was a good example of how we could have, uh, very diverse voices all working together to try to find some solutions to some real complex problems in our community. And, uh, I really enjoyed the process, so, uh, that's all I have.
I think that's what I'll.
My last thought is that it, I didn't find out about this meeting at being at six PM until I read the agenda. And I know that there hadn't been conversations that this was happening, like, can we please, I had to miss out on a family function to be here at six. Like, can we please have conversations that, hey, we need to start early today, is that okay, or like, something. And I like, I mean, do you, the calendar invite I think would help that, because when we see that calendar invite, we can either. Say I'll be there or not, you know, and, and that way it's on our calendar, but I'm with you, I missed the, uh, the, the last, uh, you know, the last council meeting. I was an hour late for that, uh, yeah, I showed up late for that because I, I missed the memo on that too, so. I think having a calendar invite for anything we're supposed to be here for would be helpful. Oh, that, and just conversation, like, hey, can we all make it, can we, like?
Yep.
But I do think that it's also noteworthy that if you can't attend for some reason, we don't have to, you know, like, we, we can. You, you know, there, there are extending waiting situations where, you know, we, we're not all gonna be able to be here and we all have a life, and it's one of the reasons why we have a. We wanted to have all seven people on these seats, so that way if someone's absent, we still have a forum.
Next month, this meeting is at seven, I saw six thirty somewhere, so is it six thirty or seven?
I think seven tonight.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, that's what the update says.
And for just our clarification on that, how long are we talking, and it's just for, uh?
Um, assuming council doesn't make any last minute change to the budget, fifteen minutes, fif- I mean. We have to do a quick public hearing on the shared revenue and then actually vote to approve the resolution that says we held the two public hearings and then approve, adopt the budget. I mean, assuming there's no major discussion.
Might have to make changes, so.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're looking at fifteen to three hours, so. Yeah, uh, and I could do it Zoom, I mean, I'll be, obviously be here in person, but. I think it'd be a good meeting for Zoom if you're not, if you're not in town, so. Yep.
All right, you gotta move to adjourn and seconded, and, uh, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Right, most passes, means adjourned.